Hello Commissioner.
Morning, sorry I'm late Joe.
It's alright, we're, are you ready? Are we, we're gonna step right off here and you're, if you're ready.
Yeah, we're supposed to follow those questions that have appeared for us. I didn't know that, I have my own but.
No, I sent, no, I sent questions last night that we're, we're gonna stick to.
Okay, I'm just saying, I, I didn't know. I, I check my mail all the time. Michelle, maybe I gotta talk to Mark, because I didn't see anything last night. I saw it this morning but.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I sent it last night.
I saw the stuff we can't say, that's no problem. I mean, I didn't know we had a script where to follow. I was writing my own question, so alright.
Dick, if you have questions that you wanna ask, I mean, that's not a problem too.
Okay, fine, that's what I'd ask, okay. Are we gonna divide them up a certain way Joe? Do you want to?
You're assigned to questions. Your initials are after each question who's asking that question.
Okay.
And these questions came from Community Paradigm.
Okay. I see Mr. Lynch is on the call there.
Yes.
Introduce him too, so he's, and also, alright, are we ready?
Yeah, let's go, let's go man.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I will, I will let him in and I will introduce him and you all introduce yourself and then.
Okay, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna open the meeting and then introduce you and then you go.
Okay.
Good morning. I'm now gonna call to order the Thursday, May 13th, meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners. I'm gonna call the role. Commissioner Collins.
President.
Commissioner Stady.
President.
Commissioner Shea, we have a quorum. This meeting is being held under the Executive Order on Remote Participation. On Thursday, March 12th, 2020, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. That order was effective immediately until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. The purpose of this meeting today and the agenda has been published and we're ready to go. With us today, in addition to the Commissioners, are Personnel Director and Acting County Director, Michelle Labadini, and our consultant from Community Paradigm, Mr. Bernie Lynch. What the Norfolk County Commissioners decided early in February this year, after Mike, Mike Mullen left us to be County Director down on the South Shore, or Town Manager, the town of Dayton, that we were going to replace him, of course, with a professional, we hope, and we decided to hire an outside agency to guide us to this point. And today, we're at, near the finish line because we're gonna introduce this and interview the three finalists. We're very happy with this process so far and it's our intention to complete it in the next week or so. Hopefully, no more than two weeks but, and have this person on board for the, hopefully, next 10 years, how's that sound? I'm gonna turn it over to Bernie and then we'll open it up.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you for bringing this to the Commission today. And I think, as we said last week, we have three strong candidates for you to interview. We've done these in alphabetical order, so the first candidate is here and in the waiting room, Michael Berry. And I will let him in and I'll monitor the waiting room during the process so that when the other candidates arrive, I'll let them know that we'll be with them in a few minutes. And if they, if we wrap up early, we'll probably be able to take the candidates as they come in, so. But let me, let me let Mr. Berry in and I'll have, I'll introduce him and then you can all introduce yourselves and I'll begin the questioning. Morning Mike. Morning Mike.
Morning, how are you?
Very well, how are you doing?
Not too bad.
Good, I'm gonna turn you over to Chairman Joe Shea of the Norfolk County Commissioners and each one of the Commissioners will introduce themselves and then they have a number of questions that they'd like to talk to you about. But thank you for joining us today, so Chairman Shea.
Good morning, good morning Mike, welcome.
Good morning Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I'm Joe Shea, Chairman of Norfolk County Commissioners and I'm gonna have my Associate Fellow Commissioners introduce themselves. Also, joining with us today is Michelle Labadini, who's Acting County Director and Director of Human Services for the county. So we're gonna go to Commissioner Collins to say hello.
Hi Mike, I'm Peter Collins and I want to thank you for applying and we did review your resume and it looks terrific, so we're excited about the interview.
Commissioner, nice to meet you as well.
Commissioner Stady.
Good morning Mike, I'm Richard Stady, newly elected Commissioner. We welcome your involvement in the process and congratulations on making it to the finalists round and, and good luck today.
Thank you Commissioner, nice to meet you as well.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna ask you a series of questions, we're gonna bounce around a little so feel free to answer them in any way, any way you want.
Sure.
I'm gonna start off and thank you for your interest in Norfolk County. I read with interest your resume and I know you have a lengthy background in the county and that is important and impressive. First question I wanna ask you is, please tell us why you're interested in this position and how you would be successful at it.
Sure, first of all, I just wanna make sure everybody can hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. Well, again, thank you for having me here and thanks to Bernie and his team for their work so far. One of the things that attracted me to this position was that it really touches on many of my skillsets. Over the course of my career, really since I graduated college, I've been working in the public sector. I got involved in my own hometown of Walpole on the Economic Development, Economic Development Commission in 2006 and that really sort of kicked off my involvement. And since then, I've worked as a municipal official, I've been a municipal employee and I've worked at state level in various capacities and I really have a true love of state and local government and this opportunity presented itself in reviewing the description put together by Bernie and his team. It's, was apparent that there was a need for someone that's been tested in the public sector, somebody that's had a diverse array of experiences. I've worked with several town administrators over the course of my career through the entire state, the Group Insurance Commission where I am now. I'm in, in charge of our municipal insurance program. We have 38 cities and towns that are enrolled with us that receive their benefits. I'm in constant contact with them. As you know, health insurance is one of the biggest budget items at the municipal level. As well as having worked at the Department of Transportation, there's obviously a huge need at the local level for transportation funding, Chapter 90 roadway projects. I was a shared service with the MBTA as well. So I'm used to working with various amount of stakeholders and I know Norfolk County has a vast constituency, you have 28 constituent communities. You have the Norfolk County Advisory Board. You have partners in government that you have to work with, the Treasurer, duly elected Treasurer of Norfolk County, as well as the Register of Deeds. And I'm used to working with people and building bridges and fostering collaboration. And when I reviewed the job description, it really felt like the right fit, where there was some public management needed, but also somebody that's been tested in communication, collaboration, identifying solutions and helping make government work a little bit better and a little bit more efficiently.
Okay, thank you very much. For the next question, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Stady. How would you describe your actual leadership style Mike? As far as being a leader, how would you describe your style?
Sure, I, I would say that, you know, as, as a leader, whether you're in the public sector or private sector, I think you always need to be evolving. One of the things I learned when I first got to Mass. DOT was that, you know, I entered a job where I had seven direct reports that were a mix of union employees and non-union employees. Some worked for the MBTA and some were assigned to various other agencies within Mass. DOT. And I think I learned early on that you really have to have an adaptable style to meet the needs of your team. At that time, we had had a number of people that I would call veteran state employees that were fantastic at their job and we had some very young newly minted employees. And one of the things that I learned was that treating everybody the same isn't always treating people fairly. And particularly with, with the veteran employees, I learned that if people were successful and they did their job, that people that had been in their positions for a little while longer, I think deserved a little bit more latitude than somebody that was a fresh employee out of college. And, and I also learned that being transparent with the people you're trying to lead is probably one of the most important things. Because we had a mix of people that were union and non-union, we had different rules for people and sometimes that led to tension within the office and I always sought to diffuse that as soon as possible and lay everything out on the table and let the employees know what my thinking was and have discussions around workplace issues and things like, you know, working from home or flex scheduling or things like that. So I would want to set a tone early on that I'm not somebody that's gonna come in and say it's gonna be my way of the highway. I want to come in and listen more than I speak. I want to meet with each employee one-on-one. I want to meet with the team as a group and to be able to talk about things in the open, what's working, what isn't, what could be improved. And then see if we can start taking some baby steps forward and start making some improvements. So I also believe in leading by example. I don't think you should ever ask an employee to do something you wouldn't be willing to do yourself and it could be from the most menial task to, you know, going late to a public meeting or anything like that. You know, I believe people have to believe in you if you expect them to follow your directives or your, your goals. And so that's, that's the type of leader I would, I would try and be.
Thank you, thank you Mike.
Commissioner Collins.
Yeah, it's my turn Mike. I have to tell you, that last answer was terribly impressive, nice job.
Thank you.
So, we, so we're scripted on the questions that we're asking. So what I've been asked to bring up is, the county has a $31 million budget and because our, our budget's based upon the real estate market.
Somebody's talking Peter.
Phil's talking.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
If someone mute themselves, somebody's talking here.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, we'll try it again.
Sorry about that Mike.
Okay, alright, so the county has a $31 million budget. We have a volatile revenue structure which is based heavily in real estate market value and presently, we have a structural deficit for the county as a whole, primarily the administration and the agricultural high school. And what would be your experience with financial management and budget preparation?
Sure, thank you for the question. Having really started my public service career on the, on the School Committee in Walpole in 2007, you learn quickly how important the annual budget process is. I was on the Walpole School Committee and Board of Selectmen in the years prior to the Great Recession and during the Great Recession and was working in the city of Marlboro in several years after the Great Recession. And I can tell you that I've seen firsthand how difficult the budget process can be and how to deal with deficits. I know in Walpole, we had to take a look at some changes to health insurance at the time. That was obviously, in many communities, one of the biggest areas that you can look at to look at the way you're administering your benefits or find a way to better leverage your, your purchasing power. And it, you know, at various points, you have to unfortunately have some sacrifice and that may come in the form of, of new positions or, or new programs. And, you know, oftentimes, that comes in the form of hiring freezes and spending freezes and the administrator and his team really sort of having a very strict policy on, you know, things as simple as purchasing supplies. So when it comes to the deficit in Norfolk County, one of the things that in my research is that you have a lot of different stakeholders. The Commissioners I know are part of the Board of Trustees. You have the Norfolk County Advisory Board, so maybe different than a municipality, I actually think it's, you guys have a much tougher job at the county level to resolve some of these budget issues and you certainly can't do them in a silo. So, you know, I would hope to work with the Superintendent at the Norfolk Aggie and work with the Board of Trustees to identify what solutions might work when you're talking with the revenue you have with those types of deficits. Clearly nibbling around the edges isn't always going to, to get the trick done and what you wanna do is, is put the budget on a sustainable path so that you're not gonna be having this conversation year in and year out and sometimes that involves taking a look at some big ticket items and having those difficult conversations and also engaging the employees and getting a sense as to what their ideas might be and what opportunities they see for cost savings and efficiencies.
That's an awesome answer, thank you. I've been doing the whole time.
Before I ask the next question, Mike, I wanna mention that this is an open public meeting and I'm happy to see we have several of our decision makers in the county on this meeting, so. They help us every day, of course, certain, all department heads and other people that are interested in, in this process, so I'm happy to see them all and welcome them. Mike, you just said something that caught my attention, talking about budget and budget issues. You use the phrase, you know, hopefully we don't have the same issues year to year. Recently, the Commissioners hired the Abrams Group to do a best practice review, financial management, operations analysis, and it's soon gonna be finalized and we're gonna try to do multiple year financial forecasting. Best practices, operation and staffing analysis has also been done and we're looking at capital planning. How would you work to achieve the buy-in to this report and hopefully successfully implement any, any recommendations from the Abrams Group? Abrams Group.
Sure, thank you for the question. One of the things I can tell you, over the course of my career, oftentimes, these studies are funded and then sometimes unfortunately, they end up sitting on a shelf and collecting dust and the recommendations aren't always implemented. I think it's, it's really important to have a very healthy and robust discussion as to what that final report is, as I understand it, it's not complete yet, is that correct?
It is not, but we're looking at early summer or late spring. We're in a budget, you know, everything's popping right here in May and June.
Sure, sure. You know, it, it certainly doesn't mean just because you, you have a report that it means you have to implement everything A to Z. But when you do have an independent look, particularly from an entity that's experienced, is, is the Abrams Group, you do have to strongly heed their advice and, and recommendations. And that doesn't mean, you know, that there's a lot of different considerations that go into that. For example, if they recommend, you know, changes to, you know, job classifications or salary structures or items like that, there's collective bargaining things that have to be considered. So not, not everything can be implemented overnight, but I think the way that the Commission is going about this process in a transparent way and, and by being very vocal about the fact that this analysis was needed, I think certainly shows that there's gonna be some buy-in, particularly from the Commission. Obviously, your leadership on this is, is gonna be paramount to being able to implement it and that's one of the most important things when you have these types of reports done. I've seen them at the local level and Boards of Selectmen, analysis comes in and you may have a couple seats change and, you know, somebody may come on that, that doesn't like the recommendations and you end up going in a completely different direction. So I also think it's important, once the, the report is complete, to invite the Abrams Group in and to be able to talk through each things and sort of poke at the bear a little bit and, and try and understand why they recommended what they did. And I think that's also one of the most important things. Rather than just saying, okay, you gave us a roadmap, now we're just gonna do it. I think to be able to navigate it successfully over the next three months, six months, a year, two years, is to understand why they recommended what they did and the importance of it. And I think if the, the employees in the Commissioner's Office and the Commissioners themselves, if we all sort of understand that, then I think hopefully that'll foster some greater buy-in to be able to actually implement it and move forward because everybody's gonna be on the same page and everybody will have heard the same information and reasoning behind their recommendations.
Thank you. Commissioner Stady.
Yes Mike, my turn again, here we go. It's a collaboration question which you may have, you may have touched upon earlier in your opening comments, but my question deals with outlining your experience with project management, particularly collaborating with multiple communities and/or entities. And for an example, if you may be aware, we have a somewhat controversial solar project that's taking place in our county in Walpole and it seems to be heading for litigation. So is that as a starting point, but not necessarily restricting it to that, how would you highlight your experience in terms of like tackling those tasks? Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Well, I can tell you, I, I've had the fortune or some would say misfortune over my career of having to attempt to foster collaboration on two of the most difficult issues, one being transportation and the other one being health insurance. And I can tell you that those are never popular things to talk about. When I was at Mass. DOT, again, I was a shared service with the MBTA. We had a number of things that we had, were asked to do, the Office of Legislative and Community Affairs. One of them was being, you know, changes in the commuter rail schedules. We had to go out to a number of, of communities and go before, in, in certain communities, crowds of 150, 200 people and talk about changes that the MBTA was looking to implement. And when, when you mess with somebody's morning, morning schedule, that is, can be a very difficult conversation. And one of the things I learned is that you have to allow people is, and every opportunity to be able to share their concerns, invent their frustration. And it can be very difficult, being the employee, to be on the other side of that and to feel that criticism sometimes which, which can, can feel very personal. And so I think certainly my skin has been toughened over the, the last 10, 15 years in, in that regard. As it relates to health insurance, I'll give you one example of, of sort of a lesson learned. When I started at the Group Insurance Commission, three years ago, the, our 17-member commission had just taken a vote to reduce the number of insurance carriers that we had had from six to three. And if, if you guys even remember what might have happened at the time, it really created an avalanche of unhappiness and frustration that reverberated up to the Governor's Office and into the Legislature. And one of the things that I identified pretty quickly was that the GIC had done a very poor job of communication, not only in terms of what our process had been, but in reaching out to our stakeholders, in particular, our, our town managers who really should have been our allies and making what, what we thought were very smart, budget-friendly decisions as to who our health carriers were gonna be. And really that work in terms of building that collaboration and trust, it shouldn't have begun three months before, it really should have, you know, been a year to six months before to let people know we're undertaking this potentially big decision and here's what it could do. And it goes to show that you could have the best of intentions in terms of initiating a public policy change, but if you don't do the work ahead of time to, to engage your stakeholders, to prepare people for changes that might be coming, to get their feedback, you know, when that time comes, you're really gonna be up against it. And, and that's sometimes where good initiatives and good policies go to die because you haven't done that engagement, you haven't done that outreach. As it relates to the item on the solar farm, I'm familiar with it only insofar as what's been publicly available and I did watch for the, the public hearing that, that was available. So I only know bits and pieces of it. I, I wouldn't wanna comment on the entire thing without knowing some of the details, but it's one of those things that I, I can certainly understand the Commissioner's perspective where you're looking to generate own source revenue from existing land, given your, your budget difficulties, that is a perfectly reasonable and necessary thing to do. And unfortunately, those decisions do sometimes run into opposition and I would see my job as, to, to work with you and, and, and always try and find solutions at the end of the tunnel, but doesn't always mean that, you know, a project may be successful, but it also might create other opportunities and might prompt people to look elsewhere at, you know, maybe doing the same thing in a, in a different area. Or sometimes it, it means that if, if, you know, the Commissioner's Office pushes forward and, and does everything it feels that is necessary to engage the community and if the Commission feels that what they're doing is, is right and moves forward, you know, then it's gonna be my job as administrator to implement that and make sure that that plan is, is successful. But I, I can tell you that, any ideas that, that Commissioners might have, I've been sort of trained over the course of my career, in my mind, I always think about, how is this decision or how would this policy impact whatever the population is? Town managers or neighbors or stakeholders or legislators? Because everything I've worked on has been so public facing, I'm sort of, my mind at this point is, is sort of trained to think that way as to who the audience is that we're going to impact and who is it that we need to reach out to. And that sort of strategic outreach and putting that plan together on, on what we're gonna do is, is paramount. Just, just a last example is, the GIC is, is preparing right now on our next procurement and we're two, two years ahead of when our new insurance carriers would take effect. We have a pretty detailed plan right now that we've identified everybody and have it down to the month in which, you know, we're gonna look to meet with labor leaders one-on-one, the Chairs of Key Committees up in the State House, leaders of hospital associations and, and health insurance organizations, because we, we learned three years ago that not doing that outreach, our, our agency really paid the, the price in terms of credibility. We really lost a lot of credibility from doing that. So we're really trying to learn from our mistakes now and have a real detailed outreach plan that we've been sharing with legislators and we're not calling people to say, hey, this decision is imminent. We're saying, hey, this decision is two years down the road, but we're engaging with you now because we wanna do things the right way and we wanna learn from you and we wanna leave enough time where we're not sort of up against the gun and doing things in haste, so.
Okay, thank you Mike, thank you.
Commissioner Collins.
One second, just writing down part of your answer. Okay, so the next question is, please tell us about your experience working in or with municipal, regional, regional and/or state government.
Sure, well, like I said, you know, I think one of the things that, you know, may, may separate me from the other candidates is that I, I do have a very varied involvement in state and local government. I think having served on a school committee and then on a Board of Selectmen, and then when I was in the city of Marlboro, I worked for Mayor Arthur Vigent, who's still mayor to this day, I really got to see government from various perspectives. When I was in Marlboro, for example, I was, I was Selectman at the time and I was working by day as a, as a municipal employee, implementing policies and, and working with the City Council and going over budgetary items and then at night, I would go and make our, our town administrator pull his hair out with all the different ideas that I would get over in Marlboro that I would, and best practices that I would try and bring over to the town and sometime. And and sometimes at at uh our board of selectmen meetings, our town administrator would propose something, and I'd say, hey, this is a great idea. We should do this in Marlborough. And I really um sort of had a a very uh robust several years there where I was really living and breathing um local government. And frankly, I I just really, really enjoyed it. It was a it was a great opportunity because uh local government is really one of the the closest government that there is to people, and you can really see um the the positive impacts you can make uh on people's lives. When I was on the Board of Selectmen, one of the things that we did talk about um a lot, which I think uh may potentially be a good opportunity for uh the county commissioner's office is regionalization. Um, at the end of the Patrick administration, they proposed a a number of different endeavors to allow for regionalization of certain services. And and um to some extent, um cities and towns have have picked up on it, but it by and large uh really hasn't been utilized. Probably the the most well-known one is uh Veterans District. Uh, when I was in Marlborough, we did create a regional veterans district with uh the town of Sudbury, and um and that's been very successful, and that's still um stands the uh the test of time today. Um, I think the the pandemic has shown um that um regionalization, particularly in the areas of of public health, that there's some opportunity to have some conversations. Keeping in mind that, you know, Massachusetts is is very parochial and every city in town, as uh as we all know, um can be very provincial and and territorial, so those conversations you know, wouldn't be had without without uh that fact in mind. But at the the state level, obviously, I'm very familiar with the state budget process. Uh, and again, I I think you'd have someone in me and in the administrator's office that really understands the intersection of uh politics and and public policy. I I have uh have a very robust understanding of how the legislature works, of how uh agencies work. Um, I've maintained as I joined the Baker administration uh in uh at Mass DOT at the onset in two thousand and fifteen and uh have great relationships there. Um, but I also uh follow uh the the comings and goings of town administrators in the area very closely. I have good relationships with many of the town administrators that uh um have come up a a lot, a lot of them around my age now and that uh were at one point, um, you know, assistant town administrators or perhaps they worked in the State House. So um I would be someone that I think uh knows the the system, knows um certainly the communities in uh Norfork County very well. I actually lived in Quincy the last two years until I bought my house in Norwood, so I'm in my third community now in uh in Norfork County. So really, I think I bring to the table a a very uh uh strong depth of experience um in and around local government and in a lot of different uh environments.
Thank you.
Mike, tell us how you could work to build relationships both internally with the staff, commissioners, and our twenty-eight-member advisory board, and externally with the community, regional, and at the state level.
Sure. One of the things that I I think is most important um in in this position is to um let people know you're here. Um, you know, I I reached out to a couple of town administrators and um uh in Norfork County, and um one of them um had had asked me uh if the administrator had departed, um the the administrator they thought uh had left, uh I believe was the administrator about five or six years ago. Um, and so, you know, that to me shows that certainly there's um some disconnect uh and that there's a great opportunity for further engagement. Um, you know, I would want uh all twenty-eight uh town managers and town administrators to have my cellphone uh and to know who I am and and what I look like. Um, and I would want the same for all the advisory board members. Um, you know, they should be able to uh pick up the phone and be able to to call me um before that, you know, there's any issue. I know uh a number of years ago, I know there was a couple of communities that were unhappy with with county government and and um were looking to, I don't know if secede is the right word, but um they were looking to to exit uh county, Norfork County government. And and to me, you know, uh I think part of of being in this position is building those relationships, um is hope- hopefully avoiding um that that tension and also engaging our municipal administrators so they know the direction Norfork County is moving in. Um, I'm not sure how many of of the uh administrators know uh, for example, that um you guys are undertaking an independent study and have hired the Abrams Group. I think that's something that needs to be be publicized to show that uh Norfork County, just like all the other cities and towns, are taking an inward look and are hiring in uh an independent review to take a look at your operations and to uh help you get on more stable financial settings. Um, and because though frankly, that's what our chatted town managers and administrators are having to do every day. And uh so as it relates to the advisory board members, uh again, I I would want to be somebody that to the extent that we're able to over the next several months, um to be able to meet them virtually, if not in person, uh so that they know who I am, and I I would want them to feel comfortable to call me up with a question or or call me up with a suggestion, um because that's, again, the the type of tone that I want to set is one of of collaboration and one that I'm, you know, easy to talk to and have an open-door uh policy. Um, and as it relates to uh the internal staff, again, I think it it's just as simple as having those conversations um early as a team um and and getting to know uh everybody's strengths and and weaknesses, but also um getting to know uh people's career goals. Um, you know, maybe um uh there's trainings and seminars and things they want to do to improve themselves and learn skills uh that they can uh help better um county government in. And so I want to be able, to the extent we can, uh foster uh those career goals and let people know that they're valued, um but also challenge people. Um, particularly, you know, we've also, we've we've identified, you know, now that the Abrams Group is gonna be hired, that there there may be some conversations that are gonna be happening over the next six months to a year, uh that may challenge employees to to up their game. And so, um, you know, we we all need to uh be cognizant of that, but I I think is uh just to kind of borrow the the Bill Belichick phrase, right? Do your job. If everybody does their job, um, we we should be okay. Um, and uh and as long as everybody's accountable and and is moving in the right direction, you know, uh I don't have any uh reason to believe that uh that the county in a couple of years now won't be better positioned for for success and stability.
Thank you. Commissioner Stady. Well, how did you know I'm a big Patriots fan? That was a great, great quote, great coach, and I use him all the time in my own examples. I usually cite something about what the man does. That's a good point there. We're back to communication again. Like you can see, that's a key thing in part of this job, Mike. My question is, communication and collaboration with Norfolk County communities, other regional entities, uh including the courthouse, which are at least all this, uh and the Commonwealth are crucial to the success of Norfolk County. How would you, I guess, again, not only ensure, but enhance communication collaboration? I think you've covered this, but if you wanted to touch on it a little differently, go ahead, fire up.
Sure. Yeah, again, I mean, I, you know, I I would certainly prioritize in the first three months of my position, trying to get a face-to-face meeting with as many stakeholders uh as as possible, be it uh town administrators, be it uh our liaisons to the to the district or superior courts, um meeting with uh the um the treasurer, the register of deeds, um and obviously engaging with with our town managers and and members of the advisory board. So um part of that would be uh working with with you, the commissioners, to to really sort of get that list together, because I'm sure there's a lot of other people that um it would be important for me to uh initiate outreach to that that I may not know about. So I would certainly rely on um your experience, and I know uh Commissioner Collins has has been on uh the the um commission. I don't know if he's the senior member of the.
He is.
Okay, okay. I thought so, okay. Um, so I would certainly rely on your knowledge um to be able to put that list together with me, and I would I would obviously do that in full collaboration with you so that you know who I'm meeting with and and who I'm um making outreach to. Um, and uh and that's really the the most important um approach and and the the way I I would go about it.
So let me, let me, let me throw a curve at you though, okay? Belichick does. It's a little off-script, but it's a real question. So uh, we're in COVID, we're in a pandemic. You're talking about communicating, collaborating, things like that. Give me an example of how you'd do it now, but we're gonna get this pandemic over with, and we're gonna be looking at a different world again. So could you quickly touch upon how you'd do what you're saying you're gonna do, both now and maybe six months from now? Give me a real example of how you'd do that, a real example.
Well, I mean, you know, one of the things that the pandemic has shown is, I mean, uh, you know, uh I I can tell you, state and local government, um prior to this pandemic, nobody was you doing very many calls on Zoom or Microsoft Teams. But one of the things that I think it has allowed, um it's really sort of almost provided uh a no excuse uh as to why people can't meet, because you're you're uh even if you're working from home, which which I have been at the Group Insurance Commission for the last year, um if you can't, you know, find ten minutes to hop behind your laptop and and meet with someone, um, you know, then then uh I think that's uh says a lot. So to me, I would make myself available to everybody that that wants to meet with me. Um, but I I do believe in sort of those personal face-to-face meetings and and going to someone's office as opposed to, you know, telling someone they have to come to me. I mean, if if I were to meet with uh, you know, the the treasurer, I would go to his office or the registrar to his office, or or if I were to reach out to to Mel Kleckner in Brookline, I would go to his office. And and so uh to show people that I'm willing to sort of get out of uh the the denim offices and and willing to meet people in in their um neck of the woods to show them that, you know, that's the type of a person that I want to be, so.
Good. Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Collins.
I have the next one, yeah. How would you, they they worded it a certain way, but I'm gonna change the wording just a little bit. How would you convey and explain the value of county government at the local and state levels?
That I think is probably the most important question and the biggest challenge, right? Uh, you know, having been in municipal government, I know that uh, you know, everybody looks at their cherry sheet and looks to see what what their county assessment is. And I know, you know, Brookline, we're talking uh uh well over a million and, you know, a community like my old hometown of Walpole, it's uh three hundred and fifty thousand. Um, and I think part of that is uh of that challenge is to um acknowledge that perhaps um, you know, uh things in the past uh haven't been maybe as communicated as well as they could have been, that there may have been some challenges, but to show that this is a pivot point where we're, the county is is gonna try and and up its game. And and uh I would sort of look to uh our town managers to say, uh, what what is your idea for, you know, how can we better work with you? And obviously, resources are are a big thing, and and that's an an item of concern. But um, you know, we have a lot of talented and smart town managers out there, and some of them might have some ideas for uh collaboration uh or might have some uh, you know, even small ideas or regarding regionalization. Um, and that's how I think we get that buy-in to show that we can do the work, is we have to make that outreach um and we have to ask um uh our stakeholders uh these questions. Um, and again, I I think the fact that the the smartest thing you guys have done is is uh do that independent study, and I think um that's something that probably I I'd be hard-pressed to believe that any of the other counties have undertaken such an analysis you know, in in the in recent years. And I think um I would, I would want to do a a a pretty good job promoting that and, you know, sending letters out and emails out and updates out to our town administrators and letting them know, hey, this is the report, share it with them, let them see it. Because I think if if they see that uh the county is is willing to look inward to improve itself, to improve its operations, to improve its game, then I think they'll say, okay, this is something that um I can have buy-in with. And also, I think if 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 they meet uh me face-to-face, um, you know, I go back in in my research, I I go back to um this article in The Globe in which uh uh this community was was uh expressing its unhappiness with with county government. You know, I I would hope by building those relationships that a a selectman or a town administrator um before necessarily springing something at a public meeting, that if they were unhappy, they would pick up the phone and and call and say, you know, I'm I'm just really unhappy. We really feel like we're we're um we're not getting the most out of things or or, you know, uh our folks really feel unhappy, because I think it's important to to have conversations before things reach a a boiling point. Um, and and nobody wants to have those those discussions, particularly once they they spill out uh into the papers, because then, you know, things really become um counterproductive. Um, so again, I I think it's important to show um everybody and all our stakeholders and the municipal managers and and the advisory board, who's obviously, you know, willing to know that you know, Norfolk County is 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 ready to modernize, ready to change, ready to um uh do things a little bit differently. Um, and we want them to be uh part of the solution uh and not just, um, you know, a uh uh a member of the audience watching. Um, and to the extent they can help us, um, you know, we need to be willing to to accept their help and counsel as well.
Thank you. Okay, we're rounding third here, Mike. Mike, please tell us about any mistake or one mistake that you think you've made in the past ten years in your career or a career move or how something didn't go well and and how you handled it.
Just one, just one mistake?
That's one. One will do, but if you.
Um, you know, I I I would say um certainly um I I've learned over the course of my career that um when you're in this job and when you're in a visible role, whether you're a commissioner or a selectman, um, you know, sometimes things can get personal and and things can get difficult, and it's it's very uh easy to um let criticism, if it's at a public meeting or or anything like that, uh sort of hurt you personally. And and I'd say that you, there are times particularly earlier in in my career where um I I took criticism personally, either from, whether it was from a colleague or uh a a member of the audience or or a member of the public. Um, and I've learned that, you know, um people, when when they're when they're passionate about an issue, um, sometimes that that fire is is sort of of misdirected. And um, you know, I think I've I've had enough public meetings uh now that I've attended on on some really sensitive matters where I've learned that, you know, um you 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 can't take that stuff home with you and and you can't uh always let that um pierce pierce your skin. You do kind of have to um separate yourself a little bit um uh from that uh criticism. Now, obviously, there there's a line of of uh of decorum and and things like that, but um I I I would say probably that maturation process um and that process of learning that um most people always have the best of intentions, and when people become passionate about items, sometimes things go uh off-track a little bit, um but that 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 shouldn't always be taken taken personally, and and I think that's important uh lesson, really, not not just in the public sector, but but in general. So um and that's something, frankly, I'm always continuing to work on. Um, when you have the best of intentions and you're trying to do the right thing, um, sometimes you'll still step on a landmine or you'll still um encounter some some frustration, and that's always gonna happen, and and it's not something that uh I I would say that I'm, I I've achieved a zen-like uh approach to, it's something I always have to remind myself uh of, that, you know, it's never personal um and that, you know, you have a job to do and you just sort of put your head down and take a deep breath and and let it go and realize that, you know, tomorrow's a new day uh and you're not gonna um, you know, carry that stuff home with you, so.
That's a very good answer. It sounds to me like you watched our our commissioners' meeting yesterday. This is a new day. It's a blur.
It's gonna be a blur. Yeah, that's good, though.
Hey, my name is is written for eleven. My name is, is written for 11, but it's actually Dick's turn in the line. So I don't know if you want to take it or if you want me to take it, Dick.
No, go ahead. It's okay. That's.
Okay. Dick, Dick's got the last question, so.
I got the, I'm the closer.
Okay, Mike, so I'm reading the question. To end on a positive note, tell us about a decision you made or project you managed in your career of which you are particularly proud.
Sure, um, going back to the anecdote I shared about the Group Insurance Commission making a decision three years ago to, after a procurement process to eliminate three of our carriers, that decision was, was rescinded. And for the next six months, our agency all but sort of hit under a rock. You know, we had taken our, our looks in the press and had a number of unhappy legislators. And then our executive director said, okay, what, what are we going to do? We have to start re-engaging people again. And, and one of the biggest areas where we had failed from a communication and relationship standpoint was with organized labor. And being sort of the governmental affairs, external affairs guy, I was sort of asked for, for my thoughts. And I said, well, we should invite the, the heads of, of our 15 major unions. We should invite them in for lunch. And that was, was met with like, are you kidding me? You know, even among longtime GIC employees, it was, we've never done that. You know, why, why would we do that? That's crazy. And it, it took about another four or five months. But finally it said, all right, if this is what you want to do, you know, come up with a plan. And I said, listen, you know, we've never, you know, and, and the employees at the GIC said it themselves. Organized labor had never been invited in to talk with the GIC. It just hadn't happened. And it was one of those items where people said, well, we've never done that before. Well, just because you've never done it before, doesn't mean you should do it in the future. And so I put together, I reached out to the AFL-CIO President Tolman's office. And I said, listen, we'd like to invite you in and we'd like to coordinate through your office. And we'd like to have the 14 heads or designees of, of these unions in for a workshop. We'll do a PowerPoint, short PowerPoint. We'll have lunch and then we'll just do a, a open question and answer session with our senior management and our executive staff. And we had our, our commission chair there at the time. And we went ahead, we did it, and guess what? It was wildly successful. Again, we, we took our, our looks in the meeting and, and we, we certainly got an earful. But the fact that we invited people in and we're now able to meet some of these union leaders face-to-face when our early engagement with them might have been if they sent us a letter expressing their unhappiness with the decision. Now there was a face-to-face relationship there. And what, one of the things that why I really feel this was a successful achievement is we, since then, we've done three additional labor engagement. We did, our last one was, was completely virtual. But now it's become a recurring meeting where the GIC meets with 15 labor leaders to let them know strategically where we're going and to hear what their concerns are. And so now we're no longer this faceless organization that makes decisions about health insurance. They know who the people are, they can pick up the phone, they can email us. If they have, you know, issues that they're trying to triage for one of their members, they can call us and it's just made for a better collaboration all around. And what it's really done, it doesn't mean we always agree on things because we certainly don't, but it's, it's really lowered the, the tenor of the conversations where the conversations are more civil, they're more productive, they're more collegial. And when people are able to have a healthy exchange of, of ideas and goals, it really makes for a much better working relationship. So, so again, it, it, it took me a little while, you know, people thought I was crazy. And, and, you know, it just, it was too much of a glad handing exercise and people didn't think it was productive. And, and again, it was, it was an agency that hadn't been used to doing things that way. And, and I think that's sometimes the problem in government, right? Is people say, we've never done it that way, that's new. And sometimes you, you need that, you have to embrace that. And once you do it, you realize it, it wasn't that big a deal. So that was probably one of my proudest achievements over the last few years.
Miss Joe. That's a great answer, Mike. It segues into the last one. So we're at the home plate, here we are. I think you're hitting a home run, but let me tell you, thinking outside the box is critical. We've all been doing it and this board's doing it and that's, that's a great motto. Just for your information too, you may not know this, there is the county advisory board. And what we discovered is also a Norfolk County Managers Association. So if you were to get the job, you could, you could put them right to work. And maybe some of these ideas you're talking about, get them, you know, get going with them and let them know what we're doing. Because I think that's part of the problem we're seeing is that people are coming after us about all sorts of questions and they'd be proactive like you're saying. So with that said, it's your turn to speak. Do you have any questions of us that you'd like to ask ourselves as a board? It's your turn to fire away and, and we'll wrap it up.
Well, I, I, again, thank you for the opportunity. I, I think one of the things that I, I was sort of wondering about coming in was the level of, of enthusiasm for the Abrams report. And, and I got the impression from speaking with you gentlemen that it's something that you've truly embraced and, and that you're really looking forward to sort of unwrapping and, and seeing what they have to offer, which again, I think is, is very important to sort of repairing those relationships. And again, putting the, the county on, on stronger financial footing. You know, one of the things that I, I'm sure, I don't know if you all would have the same answer, but I would sort of have, have two questions, but I think they're brief is what do you view as the single most important characteristic or trait the administrator should have?
I, I can start. Let me, let me preface my remarks by saying this is new for Norfolk County, even to go outside, so to speak. I don't mean outside of this building, but you know, outside of the norm. And hiring our consultant who has done a fabulous job and brought us to this position. We've particularly been under the gun with personnel because we lost our county engineer, superintendent of agricultural school, both, both those people are retiring. This job we've known about since middle of February, that Mike Marlin was leaving. And we were very happy with Mike. Mike had a lot to do with us hiring the Abraham School. Top down with that, I always throw this one in, the county plumber's leaving in a month. And the county plumber is a very important job. So we're, we're wrestling at budget time with a lot of issues. I think communication is, in my mind, one of the top issues that I'm looking for. Certainly your background is important. I, all three of the finalists here have good background without question. I think it's a, a field of how you deal with people. And COVID has set everything back, but I don't want to blame our, our issues on COVID. Actually, when you hear about county government, you may have a predetermined notion. But when you get here and work with it, and I'm sure you know this from being a Volpul official, we've got a pretty good story to tell, we need to tell it a little better, that's all. That's, that's the way I feel. I don't want to drag this one.
Either you want to go next, you want me to go next?
Yeah, sure, I'll go. You know, it's, it's so funny, Mike. The, the, the arrows that you've received in your jobs coming at you. We've been kind of sheltered from that from a long time, for a long time. And now with Zoom and everything, it's just different. Everyone's on it and they're, and they're all watching. And it's, it's a little different for us, you know, we're, we're not used to that. We used to, you know, small meetings, quiet meetings, that kind of thing. And now it's different. And so I, I think the things that you mentioned earlier are the things that, that you talked about for yourself, where you're reaching out to different, different groups, you know, the, the unions, reaching out to the employees, reaching out to the legislators, reaching out to the people who will be impacted by our decisions. I think that's the most important characteristic, characteristic, characteristics, all right, that our director needs to have. And especially with this new environment that we're not as used to. And so I have to tell you, I loved everyone's answers, they were great. Really, it was, it was just fun. It was really enjoyable to hear the different things that you said. And it wasn't some piecemeal thing that you're just, you know, throwing at us. Oh, this is what they're going to want to hear. It was really neat because you've lived this stuff. And it was really neat to have the answers that you came up with and the way that you presented was really terrific. And I, I think that the characteristics that we are looking for are the characteristics that you have. So, thank you.
Just, you know, just to follow up, I, I think you raised a, a good point. And one, one of the things that I, I maybe didn't, didn't highlight, but in sort of serving at that local level, you understand the politics as well. And, and I worked at the State House and I, and politics is, is a big part of it. And I, I really appreciate the fact that you highlighted the fact that for the, for the commissioners themselves, you know, some of the things that you're in sort of a new world. Because, you know, even as a selectman, sometimes it was difficult to get people to pay attention to what's happening in their hometown. And so you can certainly imagine from a county level, I, I can appreciate from where you're sitting how much probably less visibility you feel. But now where you're in this completely new environment and, and that's a, a real important observation and, and certainly one that I kind of had in the back of my mind just because I've been an observer of, of politics and, and local and, and state government for many years. And so I appreciate that you raised that, so, thank you.
But let me quickly jump in here and I'll make it brief. First of all, thank you. You know, following my teacher background, I learned a few things today in listening to you. Gave me some food for thought that with or without you, I'd like to implement for the good of the county. Secondly, following my good colleagues, I have to reiterate a couple of things. I'd be looking for someone who's an innovative communicator, right? We want someone who's an innovative thinker as a communicator. And those two key things I think you've shown today can be a tough decision. So obviously take that to heart. But I thank you for your, for being involved. And again, congratulations on being one of the finalists, Michael. A pleasure.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hey, well, thank you, Mike. And lastly, I'm, I'm not sure if I need to tell you this, but we're, we're going to complete this in the next two weeks. And of course you will be notified regardless. And if you have any questions in the air from you can call and, and speak to Michelle or get to us, she'll get to us or we'll get back to you. But, you know, I have hopes, I have hopes of finishing it next week. But, you know, it's, if I say next week, it'll be two weeks. So we're not going to linger. Only because everything's coming together here at the right time, budget, the report, etc.
Summer's coming too.
What? I'm sorry, what?
I think summer's coming too.
Maybe, we don't get this across, Commissioner, there may be no summer.
Mike, good luck.
Any other questions, last call, because we are on a.
No, I'm good. Again, thank you, Commissioner Collins, Commissioner Shea, Commissioner Stady for your time. I enjoyed our conversation and, and hope we get the opportunity to do so again. And Bernie, thank you for all your help and, and communication as well.
Thank you, Mike. And feel free to give, reach out to me if you have any questions as well. All right.
Sounds good. Good, good luck with the rest of the interviews. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Good job, Mike. Okay. Joe, what do you say we take a couple minute break and we'll come right back?
Yeah, can we do that?
That's fine. We're, we're going to take a five-minute break. I have to make one phone call, but we're definitely going to have a break. We're, we're going to stick to our time here.
I'll be right back. Perfect.
Are they all back?
No one's back.
Sticking to our schedule here.
God help us.
I know. I know. Bernie, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can.
That was good.
I thought that went very well, right?
Yeah, very good.
Yep. Because I think we, I think we got started about 10:05 and finished up about 11:08.
Well, now we'll get into the rest, the second and third, and I, it, get more comparison after you get into it. It's good.
Exactly.
Last week we did the county engineer and we just offered a young man the job. He's just, and it was, it was, it was an eye-opening.
Yep, excellent.
Bernie or Joe, quick question. Are we allowed to ask the candidate what type of a commitment they would make to the.
You know how I like to see that? I like to see that in a question of sort of a, where do you, well, yeah, you could just ask that. But maybe in the, the context of where do you see this fitting into your overall career path? What type of commitment do you see yourself making to this position?
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Legitimate question.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we're back, right? Back on the record at our. open meeting of May 13th relative to interviews for a position of Norfolk County Director. Next.
Okay. Let our next candidate in.
Hello, John.
We've got some, there you go. Hey, John. Good to see you.
Hi Bernie, how are you this morning?
Very well. I'm going to, thanks for being here. I'm going to, uh, turn you over immediately to Chairman Shea and, uh, let the commissioners introduce themselves. And then they have a series of questions to, uh, take up with you, um, over the course of the next roughly hour. All right.
Sounds great. Bernie.
Thank you, John. John, I'm Joe Shea, Chairman of Norfolk Board of County Commissioners.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Collins.
Hi, John. Welcome aboard.
Morning, Commissioner. How are you, sir?
Very good. How are you?
Doing well, thanks.
Good morning, John. I'm Richard Stady, one of the new members of a, a very fine board. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir. Nice to meet you.
Okay. John, as Bernie said, we're going to ask you a battery of questions here and feel free to answer them any way you want. And then you, if you have any questions at the end of the interview with us, you can ask them, of course, and we'll see you from here. I'm going to start off by thanking you for your interest in Norfolk County. And, uh, could you please let us know why your interest in this position and why you will be successful at it if you were to get it?
Well, thank you very much. I'm interested in the position because, uh, when I observed the posting and I read through the description, it, it touches on virtually every single facet of my experience and skills that I've built up with over 32 years of public management experience. Uh, the interest lies financially, um, in one of my stronger skills. Uh, I have been a financial manager for the Commonwealth since 1995. Project management wise, I've done a tremendous amount of work with, uh, the state's Department of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance. Whether it's on maintenance of state buildings, leasing state buildings or programming new facilities. I don't want to under, undersell myself on that side. I've done quite a lot of it and find it to be challenging, but yet rewarding. Ultimately, I think everyone agree, would agree, project management within the Commonwealth, um, sometimes can take a long time, but you have to be patient and stick to a plan. Regarding personnel administration, I've been a manager, um, within the public sector since 1989. First with the city of Boston, then as I mentioned with the Commonwealth and various positions. I understand, uh, union, uh, collective bargaining agreements. I have been on union management boards in the past to collaborate, build collective bargaining agreements. I've done so as well at the local level where I'm a selectman in Holliston, having recently renegotiated a few contracts. Municipal procurement, um, I've done a fair amount of that. I was on our finance committee in the late nineties. I understand to some extent munis. Frustrated by it sometimes, uh, but the data that comes out of it is still the data I work with every day. So processing municipal procurement to me is a function of understanding the basic rules of accounting, which I, I have done and, uh, find no difficulty with. And finally, Mr. Chairman of Communication Skills. Again, I find myself in a very good position both as a public official, elected public official, but also as a manager that has spent, uh, the greater part of his, of my experience anyways, trying to get the very best out of people. And you have to have strong communication skills to succeed. I think my record shows that. So my interest really brings my experience to the description that Norfolk County is looking for in this role, and I think it's a perfect match.
Thank you. Richard, Commissioner Stady is next.
Sure. Hi, John. Again, uh, here's your second question. Uh, describe if you can, your, your leadership style.
My leadership style is one of collaboration for the most part, Mr. Commissioner. I find myself, um, really working with people to achieve goals. I went to, uh, Mass Maritime Academy when I graduated. I was commissioned as a third mate. I received my Coast Guard license. And a big part of the, uh, education you receive at the academy is in leadership skills, leadership building, how to manage under stress, how to manage under pressure. Um, the experience has stayed with me my entire life. I, I've gravitated towards, uh, public services as a means to get the best out of taxpayers' dollars. And I'm ultimately make a difference. It's a similar mission to what I'm sure you, you find yourself in as a commissioner. Leadership to me comes in various forms. There are some people that respond to more abrupt or direct, um, ways of communication and others that, uh, need more cajoling or convincing. So over my career, I've kind of found my path to figure out pretty quickly what's going to be the most effective. If I had to give you a blunt answer, I'd say my leadership, uh, qualities are one of being a straightforward individual. I try to be very clear with my expectations, um, and I will work with people as long as they're rational and reasonable to achieve the goals and work with them to help overcome any obstacles they may have.
Very good. Thank you, John.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Collins.
Hi, John. It's really funny. Um, I think you're going to blow through this meeting. Your answers are so straightforward and boom, boom, boom. I love it. Okay. So I'm reading this question to you. So the county has a $31 million budget. And our revenue structure is somewhat volatile because it's based heavily on real, on the real estate market. Right now we have a structural deficit for both the county as a whole and as the agricultural high school also. And, uh, what is your experience with financial management and budget preparation?
Uh, well, first of all, it was Commissioner, thank you for the question. I'll try to slow down. Maybe I'm answering the questions.
No, no, you're doing fine.
Because I'm really enjoying the interaction. Um, but I will tell you, um, let's start with the Norfolk County position. I, I have done a fair amount of reading with the material that, uh, Community Paradigm put out there. It was very rich in detail. And I do observe some of the tendencies and issues associated with that structural deficiency. I should admit to you that I did reach out to your prior Director of Operations, Mr. Mahern, who was very forthcoming, very informative. And he, and he shared some public information with me, which I think fits with the idea that you just mentioned. The volatility of the revenue balance is always going to be an omnipotent part of how you budget. Over the last, uh, 25 plus years, I've morphed into first starting as a fiscal affairs analyst with the Executive Office of Administration and Finance. Somebody who analyzes budgets. I understand how to look at a proposed budget, pick it apart into its finest detail and identify areas of weakness. Um, it wouldn't take me long to figure out pretty quickly in a $31 million budget, to your point, that the volatility of the assessments is contributing to some of the structural deficits. So something has to give. And intuitively, that answer is the spending side. Um, I am a conservative budget manager by nature. I've never found myself in a, um, deficit position. Um, I've always managed to the resources that are presented. I do observe that Norfolk County has initiated some new, um, projects to try and enrich or bring on new revenue. And I salute you. I think that's phenomenal. Um, and I think one, one of the things I would do right away is get on the revenue side of your picture to understand the volatility, the history of the revenue collections, um, and find a path towards a, a nominal, um, approach to balancing those revenues with the projected spending. You, you should not find yourself in a position at the end of any fiscal year with any surprises. I did observe that there appear to be the development of, as you said, a half a million dollar structural deficiency that to me should have been identified much sooner. Um, the, the work to build a budget obviously is a collaborative approach. Um, and in my career, I sought, I seek out all of the stakeholders. So, um, maybe we'll be getting into that in a minute, Mr. Commissioner. But building a budget to me is, is a process that ultimately lands you, um, in a favorable position at the end. Um, and it requires daily, weekly, monthly tracking, a complete understanding of the trends and volatilities that inevitably happen in any given fiscal year. But, uh, my first task will be really examining your revenue balance to understand why it's shifted so much and how we can trim down spending to, uh, reach a balance.
Thank you. John, the Abraham's Group's Best Practice Review, which is a, a financial management and operations analysis report, will be finalized soon. Detailing multi-year financial forecasting, best practices, operations and staffing analysis, and some capital planning processes. Also, we're looking at regional services review. How would you work to achieve a buy-in and successfully implement, uh, any or all of the group's recommendations, which should be out within the very same time we're probably going to fill this position very soon.
Understood. Uh, first, Mr. Chairman, let me compliment the commissioners on reaching out to that group to have this kind of a task undertaken during your period of director transition. Um, I'd like to briefly explain my answer by giving you a little bit of my experience and background. For about 15 years, I worked for the State Police Crime Laboratory as the Director of Administration. Many of you have probably heard of some of the scandals that have enveloped the, uh, the laboratory as it has grown, with demand for services and obviously the types of sciences they perform. And some of the scandals that have involved, uh, the laboratory have resulted in similar group studies from the outside to examine, uh, those best practices. The, the staffing, the personnel, the equipment that is used. Over the last 15 years, I believe I've counted approximately three to four similar reviews. And ultimately, when these reviews come out, um, to answer your question, Mr. Shea, you have to buy into it with leadership. The first thing I will do when the group comes out is have a meeting with the commissioners to find out what their take is. You folks are the bosses and I want to get a sense from you directly on whether or not, um, the prioritization and the expression of needs reflect your needs. We will begin immediately tackling the top priorities, uh, with gusto. I have to tell you that if you allow those types of studies to languish or age without action, they become ineffective. So following your review of the priorities, I will pivot pretty quickly to bring in the stakeholders, both within the office and outside the office to help them understand the need for change. Change is difficult for many organizations, but ultimately with the facts and your support, I believe we'll be able to initiate some of those changes immediately. And as soon as those changes are seen to be positive in nature, beneficial to the organization, um, I will build on that and I will start to proceed with the remaining elements of the group's plan. I have rarely seen some of those group plans, um, fail to encompass every area of need. They frequently tell us what we've been ignoring in plain sight. So I suspect when the commissioners receive their report and I have the chance to talk to you, a lot of it will make practical sense. And then the task of undertaking the changes and improvements, uh, will be up to me and I look forward to the challenge. I've done it many times. Um, and ultimately just take patience and, uh, good communication skills.
Thank you. Good answer. Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir. Uh, John, what's your experience with project management, particularly collaborating with multiple communities in our entities? As an example, and you may be aware of this, that we have an ongoing, uh, solar project in Walpole, uh, which we are trying to put forward, but it's obviously drawn some community interest and opposition, uh, just as an example. That's not the only one, but what would be your experience in collaboration, as I said? Thank you.
I think I'd like to give you a slower answer to, um, help you, to help Commissioner Collins's point, help me slow down a little bit. Uh, one, one of your constituents is my sister. Um, she lives in Walpole. She has read about the solar project and she has an instinctive dislike for it. We've had some conversations about this and I, and I, and I leveled with her and I said, I think you have to understand there's a balance between the need and the process. And it seems to me that that project, and I, and I speak only from what I've seen from afar. I have no detailed knowledge. I've done some brief research on the project. Communication is the critical part of that project. In my town, Holliston, we are right approximately in the same space you are with the development of a similar sized solar field. We're building it on a, an old, uh, landfill cap. We had extensive outreach to abutters. It was the primary goal to ensure that the abutters directly across the street in areas, streets and neighborhoods understood what we were doing. I actually personally spoke to several of those residents to help them understand, come into the process, tell us what your concerns are now. I asked a lot of those critical questions as though I was, I was in a butter when we dealt with the developer, the winning bidder and our coordinator, our consultant. Right now we're in a free and clear stretch. We're waiting for EverSource, um, to begin the final stage of helping us develop the land source, solar based project. I think looking back on it, Commissioner, one of the success points was the upfront communication. You have to be honest because that's where you're going to learn, are we rightsizing this? Are we dealing with, uh, a, a project that is too big, too burdensome, too noisy? Are we impacting the environment in any way? If we are, let's bring in those stakeholders, Conservation Commission, Board of Health, what have you. Ultimately, when it comes to project management, I think more is better. Instinctively, as an attorney, I think you've probably used the words, uh, less is better or something along that lines. In this case, it's not. I think you have to get that buy-in early. Uh, I don't think yours project is too late for that. We can learn something. We can mitigate issues. But ultimately the growth of the, of the, of the county's revenue base, I think has the primary concern.
Yeah, let me, I'll get, no, it's fine. I'm going to go back at you though on that. I actually had the privilege and distinction of permitting one of the largest solar fields ever. It was in Canton at the landfill. So the landfill is a different type of a, a ballgame. Uh, it was, it was capped properly. It was a site that was not populated by residences that much. And it went through and it's been a great bone, bonus for Canton, both revenue and of course for electricity, all the whole, you know, the whole enchilada, if you will, you know? Where maybe we're coming in as we are right now, at this moment in time. I can't testify being a new commissioner as to what was done before because we keep getting hit with all sorts of accusations. Some of which may be true, maybe not true, but where we are right now is where we want to go. So I like the idea of like you're saying, bringing people in and, and doing it like that. But aside from that, do you have any other examples of other communities or entities? You could just fill out the question. That's all. Thank you.
Yep, sure. Absolutely. Thanks for following up. Uh, the other local community project management that we are, uh, recently been involved in is, and I mentioned this is my first round of interviews, involves the town of Medway and my hometown and the town of Milford, uh, Mills, excuse me. Uh, like many communities, we're, uh, enduring a lot of commercial vehicle, um, uh, traffic. It has impacted the quality of life with a huge amount of citizen pushback on, uh, on this traffic scheme. So last summer in August, our board and my direction called a public meeting. And we invited both business owners of industrial parks, uh, adjoining communities and, uh, obviously residents of certain roadways to a large Zoom meeting of over 300 people. We heard their concerns and we began working on a plan directly with our state representative, our state senator, and the town of Medway and the town of Milford, uh, to specifically attach a strategy to, um, hire an engineer and do studies on traffic counts. This had been kind of approached before, not successfully. It did not involve the elected officials from other communities. It was just simply filed with Mast dot and promptly dismissed. This time though, I made it a case to reach out to the town manager in Medway and I spoke with the selectmen in Milford about their concerns. One of the key solutions was, if you know something about this issue, is the alternative path of travel that commercial, commercial vehicles have to take. If you want them off your roads, Commissioner, they have to go somewhere. So the receiving community has to be prepared to accept them. In the past, Milford has been a hard no. They're up to the areas with traffic. They wanted nothing to do with it. I spoke with our town, uh, the town manager and the adjoining town, Mike Boynton. He welcomed them. It was a surprise to many. We brought them in when a cold rainy day in September, we had Mast out on scene, looked at the traffic on a critical road that connects both our towns. And I'm happy to say on Tuesday evening at our annual town meeting, I announced to everyone that Mast had approved, um, the commercial vehicle exclusion for one of the roadways in that matrix. We're making progress on the remaining roads. I believe there were six in total, but that can't be done in a bubble. You can't do it in an echo chamber. We did involve other communities because you know, ultimately Mast is going to call the state rep, you know, call the state senator and say, what do you think? If they're okay with it, you're joining towns of buying in, you're good to go. So that was a great example recently about some collaboration on project management with other communities that, um, in this case worked out favorably. They don't always, but in that case, we're quite happy with the, with the progress.
Great follow-up. Thank you, John.
Thank you. You're welcome, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Collins.
Hey, John, here's the next one. Um, and you kind of just touched on this, so it's kind of gets more of the same. It said, please, please tell us about your experience working in or with municipal, regional and or state government.
So I think, well, we'll start at the top. Um, I've worked with the state since 1995 in multiple roles. Probably seen my resume, so I won't regret to tape that. But, uh, prior to that, I worked for the city of Boston in the late eighties. I mentioned earlier, some people find this awkward. Um, I went to Mass Maritime as an undergrad. I received my bachelor's science degree in marine transportation where I was licensed by the Coast Guard as a third mate. I did ship out. I, I enjoyed it for a very short period of time and then recognized the industry wasn't there as it was when I started school. It was not a surprise. Many of us were kind of pivoting to other opportunities. I applied for and received the job at the city of Bu- Boston Budget Office and I was immediately immersed in something called, um, program management. They were taking budget dollars and assigning them to individual, um, projects and showing taxpayers what they're getting for their value. And the hook was in my mouth at that point, Commissioner. I was, I was hooked on the relationship between funding budgets and the outcome to the benefit of, of public good. So working at the city level was, uh, very insightful. They, they were doing a lot of innovative, cool things. Cool things. The state brought me the opportunity to learn the discipline of budget building, budget analysis. And budget advocacy as well as pol- public policy around uh funding. Um locally, I think, as you said, I just touched on it. I've had the experience of being on my finance committee a long time ago, twenty years ago. Then I spent fifteen years as as an assessor in my town, examining commercial personal property. Uh evaluations, dealing with exemptions, abatements and so forth. Um and then finally, as a wrapping up my first three-year term um on the select board in Hollison, I'm actively going for my second term now. I understand the need for local advocacy, the connection to projects and most importantly, listening. I do spend a lot of time listening to people. If you folks have any experience with town meeting. Um the amount of emails and texts you get going into the meeting, during the meeting and after the meeting are quite impressive. Um I actually enjoy the give and take. I learn a lot. I think it's part of my communication skill to listen. And to take some of that information and put it into action. So Commissioner, I think I answered your question on three levels, municipal, being the city of Boston. The state, which I currently work in, and local, uh which I currently uh do, and I really enjoy it. A lot of people are like, how do you do it? I said, it's in me. I. I just enjoyed public service and public management.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
John, tell us how you'd worked to build relationships both internally. With the staff, the commissioners and our twenty-eight. Member advisory board and externally with the community, whether it be regional or state level.
Um so the it's 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 a similar approach. Um I would probably first start with the staff. Um by uh scheduling meetings um with each individual to understand specifically, what do you do? Uh and do you have a workflow that includes any risk that I need to be aware of? Um those introductory meetings usually go about an hour each. Um and after I assess the internal operation, I'll report to the commissioners on my findings, my observations to determine if we need more resources. Training or identification of uh steps to deal with any significant risk. Um I would reach out to, and this came up in my first interview, um each member of the advisory board. Clearly, they have an impactful role on how Norfolk County conducts its operations. Those are the major stakeholders I have to work with, you have to work with. It's important for them that they have a few things um from me. First, they have my phone number, how to get ahold of me when they have any questions. They have to have trust in me, which means I have to tell them the truth, sometimes even if it hurts. Um and finally, through leadership, it's a question you asked earlier, Mr. Shea. The leadership will be being being very straight with them about the process by which we have to undergo collaborative uh tasks and and outcomes. Uh I did read the work that was put into your um FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two budgets. I was thoroughly impressed. Um I see you have a finance committee that did some exceptional work um sharing information and bringing it forth to your view and the public view. So you can count on me having both those internal discussions with staff, which I suspect will take about one to two weeks. Um and then simultaneously, an um outreach to each of the advisory board members, so I can understand their concerns and do a good job listening. I think that's critical.
Thank you. Good answer. Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir. John, uh communication is a key thing. Here we go again. Communication and collaboration. Uh with Norfolk County communities and other regional entities uh such as the courthouses, which are leases, leaseholders. And the Commonwealth are crucial to the success of Norfolk County. How would you work to nearly ensure but to enhance communication and collaboration? Uh you may have touched on this already, but maybe something else you want to touch on.
I think um. You know, we all, I I suspect you're having several interviews today and I'm sure everybody's saying we have to communicate, we have to collaborate, we have to talk to stakeholders. But I think the test of whether or not you're good at that in this brief interview is to look back to find out. Am I still in touch with some of the stakeholders that I've had to work with? Do they still trust me? Do I find myself reaching out to them? Do they reach out to me? The answer is yes. Uh I received a call yesterday from a gentleman at the Department of Capital Asset Management. Who um I haven't caught up with in a while. He does a lot of the capital project works for the state. I've known Altough for over ten years. Uh so we caught up on all of the projects that are going on. We shared mutual respect for each other. Um and and one of the things, Commissioner, I wanted to point out, um and I hope I'm not drifting too much from your answer, but I I feel compelled to give you this insight. Like you and maybe other commissioners and and folks listening. We're formed by the people that make us who we are today. Um I look back on my career and I can think of two individuals. That have had an impact on the way I conduct myself as a professional. Uh my goals and the qualities that make me a pub- public manager, an effective communicator. Uh I will use first names only. Uh I met Maeve back in the mid nineties. She was a supervisor of mine at the uh Office of um Fiscal Affairs. Um and wow, she blew me away. She was impactful. She was smart. Uh she was very straightforward. She had a sense of humor. She brought people in. She knew how to lean in to a conversation when emphasis was needed. Those subtle things they don't teach you about at school or graduate school were right in front of me. And I had my eyes wide open watching this artful performance by one of the most impactful people I've ever known. Um she really had an impact on the way. I developed as a professional. Second came Jack about five or ten years later. Different style in somebody who had a a little bit more, uh he was an attorney. So his thought process introduced a different angle to the way he approached meetings and the way he approached project. Management as well as difficulties. Um what I learned most from him was a work ethic um that was second to none. The job's not done till the job's done. I find myself constantly thinking about work. Thinking of ways to make it better and finding the path through collaboration with others. Uh and people that I know can help um to get the job done. It's not always successful. That's when I'm gonna need you folks. Uh I will hopefully never have to lean on you. But you have years of wisdom and experience doing the job. You folks are gonna be invaluable to the task of helping me navigate those occasional bumps or occasional issues. But I can assure you, looking back on my career, I've learned a lot from people who can teach me ways to overcome those challenges. Um I actually brought that up because I've been thinking a lot about those two people lately. They were very, very impactful and I'm mindful as I reached, you know, a certain age in my life. That I need to be that for younger people so they can see how you navigate, how you communicate effectively, so they can become very good at what you do. Um I'm not perfect, but I strive for it every day, almost in honor of them. So it's a it's a little bit of a li- a personal arc, but I thought you might find it insightful.
Yeah, very creative. Thank you. Thank you, John.
You're welcome, sir.
Um John, before I go to Commissioner Collins, you mentioned that, you know, anyone else listening, as you as you know, this is an open public meeting and. Properly called and and. It's interesting. I mentioned it earlier when the first applicant was here. We have a number of uh. Department heads and other key managers and and employees listening. Uh to all of this and and it shows two things. Their interest in uh, you know. How serious we're gonna take this. So I I just want to mention that. We're happy to. We're happy to have them in the public.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Collins.
Hi, John. How would you convey the value of county government at the local and state levels?
Value comes from results. Um I'm I'm thinking as I look at Norfolk County and its rich history, it's a good place to start. You have a a a jewel of a resource with the agricultural school. Um it's a one-of-a-kind area. That few counties, if any, can match. Norfolk County has had um a a a great history and I think as I start to sell it. I'm gonna sell it on a couple of different prongs, including history and background. Leadership comes from the commissioners. The the commissioner's view and vision define the path that I will undertake and I will help you achieve. When we're working towards those goals, I'm gonna help people understand. Uh the prioritization that will ultimately benefit them in their quality of life. During one of the conversations I had prior to this meeting, um I was talking with some folks who had experience in other counties. Um I think innovation is something that's gonna really be a key part of the success of county governments in Massachusetts going forward. Uh Western Mass seems to have some very creative things going on. Uh Southeastern Mass and Plymouth County have some very strong management and other ideas that I'd like to tap into. I don't sit before you tonight with a rich history of experience in county government. I'm gonna find where those uh improvements have been successful. Uh and I'm gonna bring them to you to see if we can replicate them to the benefit of Norfolk County going forward. But regionalization is a big piece of it. The community, the citizens within the county need to know that they're getting something for the value. Um of the dollars that they contribute to to the operation. So I'm gonna be looking for a path forward that includes your vision. Um regionalization services and creativity from other successful uh counties.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, we're gonna shift gears a little uh as we're rounding third, John. Uh in your public career. Please tell us if you've uh. Ever made a mistake and and how you handle it uh in the past ten years and how you handle it.
And we've and we've never made a mistake, John, just so you know.
I understand. That's why I'm saying career.
Right.
Public career, not.
Okay, I I hope you folks understand when the question's asked, you know, your brain starts going through that Rolodex effect. This one's simple. Um I was a young fiscal affairs analyst on the mid nineties. The development of a um. Of a state budget is is a complex exercise. The 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 apparatus that the state uses to track revenue. And spending uh is deep and expansive. On one occasion, I was tracking registry of motor vehicle revenue. And I left out a zero. When I input it into the revenue tracking database. So with many operations that had checks and balances, the revenue was uh off considerably. And, you know, twenty-five years later, I can't remember if I added a zero or subtracted it. I think I left out a zero, come to think of it, if it was registered revenue. So it showed as ten million. It probably should have shown as a hundred. Um and all kinds of bells goes off, you know, people wondering, why is our revenue off by this amount of money and what's going on? They start looking at reports. And then they determined that it was my input error that threw this off. So the woman I mentioned earlier, Maeve, my supervisor. Um and I uh worked towards identifying where the problem came from. And she came in to me and she said, I was very young. I was probably only there six months or so, still learning. And she said, look, we don't mind if you make mistakes. We really don't. You're a human. We all do. We do mind if you hide them. Or if you have recurring mistakes of the same nature. You have to tell somebody if you've made a mistake. And you have to figure out a way to make sure that that recurrence um or it it has no recurrence because it has a damaging effect ultimately on the operations. And she was right. And I think to answer your question, Mr. Shea, the mistake, although it sounds trivial and small, it's an input error, had a ripple effect. And ever since then, I tell people I work with or people that work for me, the same story. If you make a mistake, just tell me. We'll work it out. If you happen to make the same mistakes over and over again, that's a different conversation. Is this right for you? Do you need training and so forth? So. Uh I hope I've answered your question, but that would be the simplest I've experienced and uh. And yeah, there are more, but frankly, that's the clear one.
Commissioner Collins.
Okay, so um. The next question is to end on a positive note. Tell us about a decision you made. For a project you manage in your career, which you are particularly proud.
Well, I like that question. Um. Uh so I'm gonna land on this one. Um when I was the chief financial officer at the Executive Office of Public Safety. I I had to confront the fact that many of the public safety agencies. Who did not have a breadth of resources were suffering with certain. Uh facility-related problems, simple things. I do. I vividly remember Mima over here in Framingham. Having a problem removing a carpet. Simple job. They remove the carpet and what did they find? Asbestos-containing material, anastics. The job became a large job. They had no resources to deal with it. Um over the next year and a half, working with the Secretary of Public Safety and the executive and 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 uh the Executive Office of Administration and Finance. We began to develop a capital funding plan for the Public Safety Secretariat. They had not had one before. We brought uh stakeholders in from the various uh public safety agencies. We we identified five years' worth of capital. Uh projects that did not have identified capital funding needs or authorizations previously discussed. So for example. If you were in the helicopter business, the the state police cruiser business, the bulletproof vest program, this wasn't for you. This project developed a multi-year capital-funded project to help agencies deal with. Smaller, over fifty thousand dollar a year projects that their operating accounts couldn't sustain. Um and we passed the first capital um planning project um in my recollection. At the Executive Office of Public Safety um back in, I think it was around two thousand, two thousand and one. And I vividly recall uh the former Fire Chief Steve Cohn coming into my office and thanking me. Um because as somebody who had a modest budget, nothing approaching the larger state budgets that could afford such uh projects, he said, our our. Campus in Stowe um is always undergoing tremendous wear and tear from the training of firefighters. This capital project and the authorizations that you got for us has completely transformed the way we do business and thank you. So. That had a recurring effect on me as I look at capital budgeting now in a different view. Um having the foresight to develop something, work through it, work through it and having a lasting effect. Uh that capital budget is still in effect today, uh giving aid and assistance to small agencies. I think it's a small item. That's had uh multi-year effect uh in a positive way for the agencies going forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
John, I'm gonna, I'm the closer here, so uh I'm gonna give you uh two very quick questions if I could. Uh one would be, where do you feel this job fits in your overall career path? And the second thing, obviously, please, are there any questions you want to ask of us? Anything? How about the first one is, where does this fit in your overall career path? And the second would be, anything on your mind you want to ask us fired away? Thank you.
Sure, thanks. Great questions. Uh so the first one is, where does it fit? It's right my sweet spot. Um I such I started the interview by, I think, connecting my experience with the things you're looking for. It's I'm I'm about ninety-eight percent of a match, in my opinion. There are some things that I'll have to pick up on and reach out to people who know more than me. But the reason it is attracted me is because at this stage in my career, which you'll be hiring is somebody who can hit the ground running pretty quickly. Um it and I and I find that, I find that rewarding. You all are professionals. You you've had jobs where you backfill a situation where there was an all-star in front of you. Those are hard, those are hard acts to follow. Uh Mr. Malhern was a very gracious and quite frankly, he was a gentleman in my conversation, but he admitted that there were some things that Norfolk County had to confront. Uh those challenges are something that energize me. So I find myself looking at this opportunity because I think I'm gonna be pretty good at it. And I think you'll be hiring somebody who recognizes you have some challenges in front of you and I'm up for it. Um the second thing is, um if you have about two to three hours of time, I'll start my questions now. Um but honestly, I've I've read, I talked to Bernie about this. I read a lot of the material that you all put out. Um I did have questions. Let me just speak to Mr. Malhern, but for the sake of brevity and uh your time. Um I'll just ask you this simple question, which you've all heard a hundred times, but I'd love your answers. How will you folks know if I've been successful a year from now if you hired me?
I have an answer on that. Primarily due to Zoom. And other things that are going on with the county. There's a whole bunch of things up in the air right now. And. If you can help make this watch run smoothly, that's what we want. It really is. We want to do a good job. We want to present well to our constituent communities. We want to do um. More with what we have. Uh we'd like to get out from under our um. Budgetary issues, um the the ones that are kind of have us underwater a bit. So those are all big things, but really we want to run smoothly, um if at all possible.
I'll say, John, I'll take a little my education background. I know when my students would come in. How do you get an A? How do you get a B? Very easy. You lay out what you're supposed to do, right? You have clear established guidelines. So I would do the same thing with you. Working with my colleagues. I think we would establish benchmarks. What were our expected takes is our, what we expect of you to do in both short-term, long-term. You know, over the next year. And at the end of the year, I would hope that we'd have a very productive conversation in terms of where you're at. And where we're at. And I always think it's always a two-way street. It's more important than anything else to me. I think that we always emphasize two ways. I'm always learning. I'm not perfect. I'm always trying to improve myself as a person, as a father, as a commissioner, and I would hope you'd want to have the the same approach. Thank you, sir.
Do you, do you have one particular priority that emerges right now that you'd like at the top of that list?
I can't say it. It's it's beyond me, but finances are blowing me away. Everything, everything seems about this job is is money. Everything is is finances. It's simply, we want to do things. Each of us in our own have our own agenda, but it's always goes back to, well, how much money do we have and where are we at? So that's a key thing. That's for me. I'm speaking for myself, but obviously my colleagues can chime in.
I I I have three things that. in a year, I would write, I'd tell you now and in a year, review them with you. However, things pop up. We're we work well together and old habits. First is communication. I think we can do a better job communicating with our cities and towns, with our employees. And that's general telling the story. Secondly, I agree with Dick. It's financial, it's budgetary. And the third part about, and it goes along with the second part more is you go to a budget meeting here and people are talking about, well, in 2009, we didn't do it this way, or 2005. And I have a 30-plus-year experience as a public employee, both in the city of Quincy and the MBTA. So I know how some of this stuff works. We can't have the luxury. We all have the background in the public side. And Commissioner Collins has extensive background at the county. Richard was on the advisory board for, I keep throwing, he may have held the record, 36 years plus being a selectman. So we know the old way, but it isn't working anymore, and it's very difficult to make change here. The last director was probably the most the first person to be here as a director from the outside. And we had good directors before that, but they were all inside people. And I think part of this process and going to community paradigm was collectively as a result of that without naming any of these subjects. And we said, let's go outside. This is innovative for Norfolk County, believe it or not. Yeah, we got some very, very good people. And there's some retooling and, yeah, personally, no question about it, like every organization. And it's a combination of old habits die hard and better communication, as far as I'm concerned. Based on what I'm seeing here today, I haven't discussed anything with the other commissioners, you know, Bernie is preparing us with sending, well, we're only second candidate in to three, but people that certainly have the background, and then we'll go from there.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. I don't have any other questions at this time. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to spend some quality time with you and understand your concerns. So please accept my personal appreciation for this.
Okay. Let me tell you what I think is gonna happen from here. We have so many things that are winding up in the spring, and certainly by the summer. We're trying to finish the Abraham Report or take receipt of it, but it comes up every week at our meetings. We're finishing up our budget, which statutorily has to be ready, of course, before July 1st. We're trying to hire a director. And we're wrestling with this enormous issue. I don't know yet how big it is, but of this administering this federal money that's been awarded to cities and towns and counties. It's all coming together. We're looking to complete this process within the next two weeks. So if you have any questions, call Michelle Labadini, who is our acting county director and is on this call. She's also our human resource director. And if you need to get back to any of us, just call Michelle and she'll see that it's done. But we're looking, or I'm looking at, if I tell you it's gonna be done next Wednesday, it probably won't be done on the Wednesday after, but this is a priority of all of us, and we really appreciate coming in.
I understand. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that update.
Thank you, John. Good luck.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. Bernie, am I good to go?
You're good to go. Feel free to reach out to me as well with any questions. All right?
Do well. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
We're gonna go into another five-minute recess before we go to our third candidate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
We're waiting for Joe Reynolds. He's having trouble getting on, but we can chat among ourselves here.
Mr. Chairman, you said our goal is to more or less get this wrapped up within two weeks, right?
Our next week. I mean, we're finally see light at the end of the tunnel on some reason. The engineer is 98% done. I know that Michelle will have a report on that next week. The school, as you know, the superintendent accepted our offer. That's done.
But just to get, we'll talk about it. We could, let's say, let's hypothetically, hypothetically, let's say we vote on the candidate of our choice at our next meeting. But then that's off of the position, and then we have to then offer contract and so we may not have so many.
That's why I'd like to.
You know what I'm saying? Okay.
Yes.
All right.
I mean, I can tell you that's gonna be on the next week's agenda, just so we won't be prohibited from talking about it.
Yeah, right, right.
It's open, yeah.
But he made the person, whoever it is, might not be on board until maybe early June or whatever, something like that, but you know, possibly.
I would probably say probably mid, assuming you appoint someone or choose someone next week and you have your discussion over the course of a few days and then finalize it the following week, probably looking the third week of June, something like that.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get a timeline. It'd be that late, huh, Bernie? Why would it be that late?
Well, usually it's a three- to four-week notice period that people give.
Okay. Okay, I see. Okay.
I mean, it's possible it could be a little bit sooner. But
All right.
Your third candidate is here. If you're ready.
All right.
Right.
Okay. Excellent.
Okay. I don't see him though.
There he is.
Here we go.
Just came in.
Okay. Good afternoon, Joe.
Hey, Joe.
How are you? Welcome. I'm gonna introduce myself. I'm Joe Shea, Chairman of the County Commissioners. I'm gonna tell you that
I'm not sure he hears us.
I can hear you now.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
I'll start from the beginning. Welcome. We're, as you know, interviewing finalists for the position of county director. We're gonna ask you a series of questions. I'm gonna have my colleagues introduce themselves. And then we're going to go right into the questions. And if you have any questions for us at the end, we'll be happy to answer them. So I'm gonna introduce Commissioner Peter Collins first and then Dick Stady.
Commissioner Collins. Peter Collins, thank you for applying. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. Thank you.
Good morning, Joe. Richard Stady.
Good morning, Richard. Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, congratulations on being one of the finalists as well, sir, and good luck today.
Thank you.
Okay. Joe, as I stated before, thank you for your interest in Norfolk County. Could you please tell me why you're interested in this position? And why you would be successful at it?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason I'm interested in this position, I've had an opportunity to work in government, both as an elected official and appointed official. And what I have found is there's a great reward in being able to serve a community. Being able to serve the county is the next step up. I feel as if with all the experiences that I have had in my life to this point, professional career, that have spanned military service, that has spanned private sector service, as well as government service, they've all come together to paint a picture for me that here is a place that I'm able to bring value. I'm very motivated by that fact that I'm able to give back to a community that raised me, the community that has set great standards as far as quality of life. Financial management has been strong, and the reason for that is because when you have capable people who are willing to give of themselves, as well as people who are able to work with others to collaborate together in order to move a community together. My background as a military leader, just as a soldier, was predicated on teamwork, that you as an individual cannot accomplish as much as you can when you're a team. And that, one of the things that I was taught is that leadership leadership is a requirement for a team to excel. And you're not born to be a leader. You actually, you gravitate toward it. You find yourself that you have skills in that area. And again, I brought those skills to the private sector where they were honed. I experienced a lot of different, various opportunities, different responsibilities that lent themselves to the previous experiences that I had had in the military. And as I found, working as a volunteer in the government as a planning board member, also as an elected member, that there was a great amount of satisfaction in being able to see the results of your effort and to know that you've had a part to play in a positive way to give back to your community. I love a challenge. Operations has been something that I felt that I have been good at. And it's just a matter of fundamentals, and this position is one that I see as a great challenge. I've had the opportunity to observe the county commissioners' meetings as well as the advisory board meetings over the last five months. As you've taken on the fiscal year '22 operating budget, you're undertaking a first-of-its-kind capital plan. And I think what is very important is that what you've undertaken from a review and analysis of your financial management practices and your operational analysis, I think that I think that that is a very timely initiative that's been undertaken by the Commissioners and I tie that back to what I have observed and what I know of, of county government. There are opportunities for you to be able to put in more efficient or tighter financial management practices. I know that revenues has always been a challenge, whether it be in the private sector or be in government, revenues are a finite source, however, you have to be as creative as you can. Another thing that has drawn me to this job, these are challenges. I love a problem. Again, I'm not an individual superstar, I'm a member of a team and one of the things that I feel that I do well is that I'm able to build teams, I'm able to set clarity, I'm able to set a direction and a framework and then I'm able to assess, formulate, execute on plans on behalf of my leaders or on behalf of my community. Again, you turn around and you set that expectation with the people in the team that you're working on and that is a great feeling of satisfaction as well when you've got a team that's all rolling in the same direction. So that Chairman, I hope it hasn't been a too long-winded answer, but that is exactly the motivation and the interest that I have in this position and I think that there would be plenty of challenges to keep me motivated for many years to come.
That's for sure. Thank you. Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joe, how would you describe your leadership style?
Well, Commissioner Stady, my leadership style, I think it's a very straightforward and easy to understand style. You set an expectation, you hold yourself accountable, you demonstrate how your conduct is to, is to set the standard for your team. You give people an opportunity. You give them an opportunity by communicating what, with them, what the mission at hand that you're responsible for and carrying out. And then you understand what their capabilities are and you understand what their motivations are. Are they being realized to the potential they thought they could be? Those are things that I think that you draw a lot of benefit in when you make that connection with team members. My leadership style is I set a framework. Within that framework, you incorporate your subject matter experts, you incorporate the people who do the work, listed ideas. However, the end of the day, through that assessment process, you formulate the best plan that you think is going to work. So operationally, this is my, my, my basic fundamentals that guide me all the time, regardless if it's financial operations, if it is a a construction operation, if it is a military operation, you understand your people, your process and your resources. When you understand all of those and you're able to use those in the most efficient manner and you integrate those three things together, it's not a complicated process. It's clear communication up and down the channel. When I say, you'll hear me use acronyms and references from the military quite a bit because they worked. Chain of command works in two different ways. Chain of command is set to send down information to give guidance, set missions. Chain of command is also used in a more important manner to hear that feedback come back up that chain of command. That keeps your leaders informed. But thirdly, you've got to have that ability to communicate side to side, whether that is in your organization, whether it's a partner organization or an abutting interested party who may be a stakeholder. So those are really the fundamentals of my management style.
Thank you, thank you Joe.
Commissioner Collins.
Hey Joe, so all these, all these questions are scripted out, so it's my turn.
Yes.
So the county has a $31 million budget and our revenue structure is volatile because it's based heavily on the real estate market. And we have a current structural deficit for the county and especially at the IG school. And what is your experience with financial management and budget preparation?
Sure, thank you Commissioner. Well, my most recent experience has been three years as I served as Chief of Staff and Director of Operations for the town of Braintree Mayor Joseph Sullivan. I was the primary point person responsible for organizing the annual operating budget, the capital plans and any supplemental budgets that also became necessary. The most important thing I found was the organization of the information, our financial information. Is it reliable? Is it readily accessible? Are we able to discern between our, our strong revenue sources? Are we able to identify and respond to where our, our cost centers are? Are we able to understand what's driving an expense that just doesn't seem to be able to be managed? And a matter of fact, what we, what answers all of that and what I took the approach of is validating where this information is. Validating where these costs are. Do the people who are in charge of these cost centers, of these line items, are they intimately knowledgeable of why and how costs rise or how costs are sustained? Revenues, for example, as I've observed in the, the Abrahams Group, what they have provided to you to date as far as feedback and then just discussions I've heard in the Advisory Board meetings. Identifying where your revenue centers are, identifying where all your available revenues are. Are you able to actively manage that money on a daily basis? And the most important tool, make sure that you can activate, that you can actively manage that money on a daily basis, is what kind of reporting tools do you have? How are we able to access the data that you have, all this financial information and make it understandable quickly? Is it convoluted? Well, if it's convoluted to the people who are managing the process, it's going to be convoluted to the others who also have to make the decisions. So, so it's a matter of clarity, that's how I approach my financial management. It's a matter of simplifying the information, making sure that it is available and that it is reliable. If it is not available, what we did in the town of Braintree was, is we had an old archaic system. There were a lot of manual processes in our financial end-to-end processing from a tax revenue collection standpoint, from a reporting standpoint, from a control of invoices, where our expenses are going and for us to be able to get information to give to the mayor, for us to make a tactical or a strategic decision, it would take time and time is money as well. So we made a, we made a decision to upgrade our system to a system called Munis and I guess it's, it's very similar to the system and I'm sorry, the name escapes me, that the county is using. You're able to build modules onto this account, but what it does is that we were able to set up a charter of accounts. We were able to rewrite our charter of accounts. When we rewrote those charter of accounts, it gave us an opportunity to set up a structure of being able to track money and each individual main line item may be tax revenue, maybe school expenses, operating expenses, capital expenses. And we, so we had a historical data that gave us more reliable estimations and I know that's a, a big challenge right now in the county is, is identifying reliable revenue information from a forecasting standpoint as well as reliable expense information from a forecasting standpoint, because that is a real fundamental, I know you're very well aware of your ability to effectively budget and set operating budgets for fiscal years and now when you include capital, a capital plan and I know that the county right now has a big challenge in front of itself and how to address their capital needs, how to fund those capital needs and as the chairman had mentioned earlier, where you are reliable most, you rely mostly on real estate revenues from the registry of deeds. One of the things through active management, through assessment of, of, of the situation, I guess studying the battlefield, I'm gonna use another military express, expression. You look for targets of opportunity. Can you, can you turn around an expense and make that into a revenue? That is, boy, that is a skill to have. I'm sure any administrator, any mayor or CEO values that. And so how do we, how, where is, where is money seeping out? Do we have underutilized assets that aren't being used, but we're insuring them, we're paying water and sewer on them and we have to maintain the building in order to keep the value for some other type of future use? So, we did a few things in the town of Braintree, we were able to leverage some of our golf operations to create new sources of revenue that helped out that enterprise account. From an operational standpoint, we had underutilized buildings in the town of Braintree. Where with a little bit of investment in those buildings and a little creative negotiations with, with semi-governmental tenants and as well as government partners, we were able to generate some new revenues and what did they do? They were able to cover costs. Did they generate a huge amount of a net revenue for the community? They did not, but what they did was they did two things. They eliminated a cost and they were able to generate revenues to cover the operations of those buildings, upgrades, maintenance of those buildings, which freed cash to be applied other places. So that's just a couple of Commissioner Collins, just a couple of things in the philosophy of how to actively, how I, my experiences in budgeting, cost containment and then actively managing that budget, implementing and then inspecting because you expect what you inspect and I'm sorry, I've got all these little, little terms that, that help me and that I think from a very simplistic standpoint, help people who work with me to understand where I'm coming from and what the objectives I'm trying to achieve. So, I hope that answers your question.
Does, thank you. Joe, you mentioned the Abrahams Group and as you know, and I have noticed that you've been on our meetings, we've hired them to do a best practice review, a financial management and operational analysis and a multi-year financial forecast. And also look at how we can improve our regional services. How would you work to achieve the buy-in, successfully implement the group's, the group's recommendations?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if I understand your question, how would I work to implement the recommendations by the Abrahams Group?
Right, we haven't seen it yet, it's, it's, it's it's this spring or before the summer or right early in the summer and it's gonna co, coincide with the hiring of a new director and we had another, we wanted another set of eyes, we've gone, precedent setting, we've gone outside and you know, we don't know what's in it yet either. We've been getting some updates on, particularly on the capital side. But have you thought about how would you think you could implement some of their recommendations? Are all of them or?
Absolutely.
I don't, I think to implement all would be difficult, but we'll see. I just wanna know what you think about it.
Certainly. Well, I think the first important point would be after having the opportunity to review the findings and their write-up, I would wanna make sure that I'm absolutely clear from the Commissioner's perspective, what are the areas of priority? What are the, what are the, what are the more significant pain points? And what are, what is the related value of implementing a particular recommendation? Now, the recommendation, and I'm certain that along with the recommendation of, of what's been identified and what needs to be improved is how it could be implemented. So I need to best understand all of the stakeholders who are being impacted by these changes. So I'd wanna fully understand that. Then I would meet with the, the leaders or those responsible for the areas that are impacted to ensure that we, we, the Commissioner's office, if I'm, if I'm so fortunate to have this, to be named to this position of the Director of Operations for the county, that there is a, a clear understanding and agreement, that this is a problem and that it has to be fixed. Okay, and there's a number of ways that we can do that, so. I, I, you always wanna find a common ground, okay, and you wanna be a clear, crystal clear as possible. So as I stated earlier, I take a framework and this would be the case if I, if I was working for the Commissioners, is you set that framework, you give me that guidance, I take that and now I explain that, I understand, I understand it, I explain that to the stakeholders and particularly to the ones who are gonna be responsible for, for implementing that change or affecting that change. That there is clearly, they know what the charge is before them, so I would give them an opportunity first to help, to, to, to explain, to suggest, how would you want to have this implemented? What is the easiest process? As long as you meet, what kind of timeframe are we looking at? Are we being deliberate in implementing these changes? Because you need to be deliberate. You cannot put in a half effort on this. And do they understand what the end is gonna look like? Because that's one thing, if you've ever read The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, the very first habit, begin with the end in mind. Is there an understanding between you and the stakeholders of what that end wants to, what the Commissioner wants that end to look like? So, you get buy-in, so I guess that is a, a long way of saying buy-in from the stakeholder and let them know that I am going to be there the entire way to supervise, to help, to help guide, make suggestions, find other resources, troubleshoot issues. They're not in this alone. So it's an act of management because there are going to be numerous steps, I'm certain, that are gonna have to be undertaken at any one given time. Just because of the nature of the fact that time, we don't have a whole lot of time to take this in a linear fashion. We have to be able to do more than one thing at a time and you have to have someone who can actively manage those people who are going to be the primary stakeholders and the ones who are going to be playing a major role in making these change happen. But none of that happens without that active management and that clarity of guidance.
Okay, thank you, good answer. Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir, Joe. In your experience and speaking on your experience, how does it relate to project management, particularly dealing with multiple communities and/or maybe perhaps entities? For an example, just as an example, we have an ongoing solar project and you might be aware of that.
I am.
Drawn some interest, both pro and con, from various stakeholders. So just as an example, using that or others, talk about your, your background and how you relate to those type of problems. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Stady. Well, I've got an extensive background in project management. Primarily formal training as a project manager when I was in the financial services sector. I I filled those responsibilities as a titled project manager. I've taken on those responsibilities as a subject matter expert in various areas of risk management, IT implementation, business analysis. And again, it goes back to the very fundamentals of managing any kind of a process. You set a framework. You explore the assumptions and you need to validate all those assumptions. When you get your requirements, you need to make sure that there is buy-in from all of the stakeholders and then you explain back what you are able to do and how this approach is going to, to unfold. Are you going to do it? Are you going to do it in phases? Are you going to do it as one lump sum? And you know, a lot of times it's the uh. Project objective that dictates all of that. So I've had the opportunity to manage multiple projects that were small in scale, medium in scale, large in scale. I've had the opportunity uh to manage global wide projects where we had uh programmers in Poland. We had business analysts in Ireland. We had uh data architects in India. Um, we had the business expertise uh in Texas. And we had the management project owner in Boston. So the ability to uh navigate through all these different types of constituencies, if you will, because they are all different business units. Um. That gave me a valuable experience that you're not only dealing with people of different professional. Um. Uh, acumen or, or expertise, may they be technical, may they be financial, may they be uh business strategy. But you, so you've got to be able to explain um to the technical people, to the people who are doing your testing. Uh, up to the people who are paying for this project. Um. Here are the milestones. Here are the expectations. This is how we're doing. Um. You have a heat map, for example, that is a great tool to use to say, okay, here are our issues, here are our bugs, here are, are. Um. Uh, our accomplishments, here are things that have been validated, here are the things how we are able to integrate. Um, and this is, we're on time and this is where we are with, with the money. Uh, are we, are we on budget? Uh, and there's gonna be times, and this is where I found uh another great challenge. Is that you would find people who were being resourced across multiple projects that were on your projects. So as a matter of you again, through this active management. To press upon them that you have. They have an important piece for us to be able to meet this next milestone. Because most often in an IT world, for example, things are built upon the, the previous thing. Or when there's an integration, if there's nobody to integrate with, you're dead in the water. So in time is money, as usual. Uh, in the public sector, I was able to use a lot of those experiences. They brought to bear when I dealt with a different type of stakeholder in government. Um. There are a lot of people or organizations that were set in certain ways. Um, but that didn't mean that they were not motivated. So again, what motivates these people? How do they work? Uh. Uh, do they understand uh, uh? The mechanics, I guess, or that's probably not the best term to use, but did they understand? Uh, the nuance of why we're doing what we're doing and the role that they play in that. And although it might be a brief role or although uh. It, it might be something completely new to them. You gotta assure them that they've got the backing, they've got the resources, they will get the training. And that, uh, that you as a project manager are available at all times. To hear what their concerns are. And to make sure that you're capable of addressing those concerns of the project just keeps moving, moving forward and I'm, and I'm. And I'm very proud to say that I had a very, very high uh grade level of delivering projects on time. Uh, and on budget, uh, and generally speaking, the standard would be within five to 10% of the uh original. Uh, uh, cost estimate for that project in timeline.
Good. Thank you. Commissioner Collins.
Um, here's the next question. Uh, please tell us about your experience working in or with municipal, regional, and state government because the county. Has to work with all these different entities.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. So uh. As a uh. Uh, as the Chief of Staff and Director of Operations in the town of Braintree, I had quite a bit of opportunity to work. Uh, with surrounding communities as well as with the county. We did quite a bit of work partnering with the Sheriff's Office, for example. Uh, the Sheriff's Office has a facility uh that they rent from the town of Braintree that was a former county uh asset, a former respiratory hospital. Up in Braintree Highlands, South Braintree. Uh, and it was a great partnership uh that uh the Sheriff's Office would provide. Um, which it was a mutual, a mutually supportive relationship. Uh. I could pick up the phone at any time and ask and call somebody at the Sheriff's Office or call someone at the site in Braintree to ask for assistance. Uh, perhaps from a logistical standpoint. Uh, or just from a space standpoint. They in turn uh helped, felt very comfortable uh knowing that they could call my office. Um, and we could coordinate whether it be a graduation for new cadets. Uh, some kind of a ceremony sheriff would like to uh, uh, conduct. Uh, to recognize residents of the county or recognize residents uh in the town of Braintree. So um, also. The town of Holbrook, um, town of Holbrook is part of a tri-town water committee. Um, uh, we share water resources with Randolph and Holbrook. It was very important uh that we had a very constructive, open. Um. Relationship due to the fact that there was a huge uh. Um, challenge in front of that uh tri-town uh author authority uh to address an aging water processing plant. Um. Plus, on top of that, in nineteen, excuse me, in twenty nineteen, uh, there was some, um, some chemicals uh that were found. In the water through various tests. There was a new standard that was put out by um. The environment, uh, office, the EPA and the Department of Environmental uh. Um. Affairs in the state of Massachusetts. Uh, and that we had to work closely together uh with those other two communities to address um. The removal and eradication of this very small and, and it was, it was, it did not rise to any level where it endangered the people of Braintree. However, because of the close monitoring and uh the low bar uh set to ensure that there's complete. Um, uh, safety in our water operations, we were able to get ahead of it, way ahead of it. And we're able to work together in the three communities and that took, that took, we had to make sure that we uh. We shared our resources, that the timeline was agreeable to all of us and, and all three communities knew what they had to do and what their part was in it. We were able to do that and we met the diet, we, we were way in ahead of the deadline. Uh, and it established uh, a, a, a good program actually that became an annual program. Uh, uh, a, a, a meeting item for tri-town committee uh to have to um. Um, uh, accomplish on a yearly basis. So that was just good government there and that was done through collaboration uh of working with communities. Uh, and then just the last thing I, I might point out is in the town of Waymouth. Town of Waymouth and town of Braintree share uh, a very important geographic area. It's called the Landing. And uh, it's got a very uh. Significant historic uh commerce uh background down there. We're Braintree and Waymouth have shared that uh through the years. It uh. Toward the end of the uh twentieth century, nineteen nineties, uh, that area really um. Became rundown and so the mayor uh at that time worked with the mayor of uh Quincy, excuse me, with the mayor of Waymouth. Uh, they got a PUD grant down for that area and then through the next fifteen years, uh, the communities have worked together. Uh, to implement flooding measures, flooding mitigation measures down there. Uh, traffic safety measures. Uh, and then also opening up a smelt brook down there. And so. That took a sharing of resources between uh the DPW of Waymouth and Braintree. Uh, planning uh departments of Waymouth and Braintree and the conservation committees between Waymouth and Braintree. And I was the main facilitator to ensure that these meetings were happening, that they were scheduled. And what the accomplishments were and that the mayors were fully briefed and understood. Where, where, where those projects stood and we were able to accomplish them all successfully at, at, at a very uh. And, and containing the costs as well. So that, I was very proud of that as well. Thank you.
Thanks. It was a great answer.
Joe, tell us how you could work to build relationships both internally. With the staff, the commissioners in our twenty eight member advisory board and externally with the community in. Regional and state level.
Okay, uh, well, if I may, I'd like to start with the community first. Um, so the experiences I've had uh with the, with constituents. Um, is, it's, it's a communication. It's first and foremost, open channels of communication. When I came on board with the mayor's office back in uh January two thousand seventeen. Um, the mayor had already recognized at that point that he had a major problem on his hands with constituent uh communications management. So he made the, the, he made the decision that he uh had to hire someone, a staff member in his office to be responsible for that. Um. Three years previous, the town had bought um and a, a. An application, constituent service response application. Um. It was called see, click, fix. And essentially what it was is that you took advantage of uh the various portals of communication, may they be a phone call, more traditional manner, walk-ins. Uh. And the internet. You were able, so what we did, so that program was not able to be stood up with the resources that were in place the previous, at the first attempt. When I came on board, one of the charges he gave me was that you need to stand this program up. It's critically important to us. So I worked with the, we hired uh, we hired a person for that job. Um, and working together, understanding what the application was. We were able to stand the program up by bringing on board all the various departments that you're able to route uh intuitively. Uh, these, there was a pull down menu of choices when you went online. Um, and you were able to assign the projects, you were assigned your request, whether it was a complaint, whether it was a problem with a sewer backing up in front of your house. Did a tree uh fall down on their fence, et cetera. Uh, so the standard prior to us standing this program response to constituents was twenty one days. Twenty one days from, from the time that a call came in and it was acknowledged and resolved. When we stood this program up and it was fully implemented three months later. We went on to create a standard of seventy two hours from acknowledgement to resolution. And that was a ninety percent rate of all calls. That, that came in. We were also able to build off of that opportunity to see where these calls were coming from and how they were mostly routed. So what it did. Is we were able to route calls without staff in the office having to take care of uh, of finding out and qualifying what the call was. So that gave the staff more time, which gave more time for walk-ins to, to address those types of situations. Now, to get buy in and, and how do we, you get people to work together from uh who's on the staff and in on the commissioners. It's all about communication. And again, I wanna go back to what I like to call is just the fundamentals of management. You know, it's, it's setting an expectation, it's being uh accountable and that all starts with communication. So I'm a member of a team. I'm a member of, if, if I may project, if I was in this position of Director of Operations. I'm a member of multiple teams. I'm a member of the team of the commissioners. Because. My number one responsibility is to carry out their intent and their policies and to provide feedback to them, to give them information on what they need. So I need to, I need to make sure that I'm accessible. I need to make sure that I am accurate. And that I most importantly need to make sure that I am accountable and that shows a commitment on my part to you as the commissioners. Using that same principle. With my peers. Um. With our partners in the county. And more importantly, to the staff itself or the team, I should say, the team itself within the commissioner's office. Who are responsible for taking care of the work on a daily basis. Are they getting clear guidance right from the get go? Am, am I supervising in a proper manner that I am not? I'm not micromanaging and I cannot stand micromanaging, but. I'm entrusting them as professionals and subject matter experts. So I'm showing them that respect. And I'm willing to show them the hard work that I'm, that I'm capable of doing. And that I am accountable. And that. That reciprocal, uh, to me, that setting the example. It tends to reciprocate back from those people that you deal with. Um. Am I respectful of their time? Do I answer their calls? Do I take their, do I answer their emails in a timely manner? Those are all very important to me and I think that sets a tone that you are a person who can be counted on. Who is honest, put the honest effort in. And who, who will, who will. Will communicate in a respectful manner with you so that we can work things together. To the end where we need, what we need to accomplish. So that, that to me is a very basic uh approach. And I think of fundamental, it's just a matter of fundamentals. Uh, of establishing good relationships. I had an opportunity uh as a relationship manager. Uh, for a number of years in, for fidelity investments. My responsibility was dealing with a number of internal company clients of ours who used a cash management application in our services. I had to be available to them at all times. I had to anticipate. I had to be able to uh. Uh. Give answers, give assurances, provide guidance in a very timely manner and accurate and timely manner. And we build up that trust over, over a period of time. And when I made a mistake. I was accountable. And I owned up to it. And I promised that I would work on making that better and believe me, that made me a better proactive relationship manager. And I think that's really what you can expect out of, out of me. If I was to perform in this role for you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stady.
Yes, uh, Joe. Again, we keep talking about almost the same thing, but communication. And collaboration with Norfolk County communities and other entities such as the courthouses. Uh, are crucial in the success of the county. How would you work to not only ensure. But enhance communication and collaboration as a new director?
Okay, thank you. So one idea I had had. Um, is that if I was to take, if I, if, if. If I was named to this position. I think after receiving guidance from uh, from the commissioners initially. Uh, meeting with the people who I'd be working directly with in the county. That, that in, in particular, within the office of the commissioner uh and, and our key partners. I would like to set up, and I would like to set up time to meet with every county advisor. Or meet to the twenty eight communities. But I think um, I would also like to have an opportunity to pay a visit. To the executives. Of each of these communities, whether they be a board of selectmen or they be a, a mayor's office. Um, I think uh. It, it's extremely important for them to know who in, that they have a person in the commissioner's office that they could feel comfortable calling. And talking to or raising an issue to. Um. So that's the first thing, familiarity. That would be the very first thing. And again, as an opportunity to set expectation with these partners of ours, these community partners of ours. Uh, to be able to look me in the eye and size me up. To say, is this guy a genuine person? Okay, all right, uh, I'm gonna hold you, Joe, uh, to those standards and those recommendations or those suggestions that you've made to us. Um, so that would be the first step of, of creating a relationship. And, and in those, in those meetings, I think what's gonna be very important is to at least, is to take away from each one of those meetings is. What's the main concern that that community has or that particular uh county advisor has? Um, as pertains to its relationship with the county. Um, what is a service that they're looking for from the county? Is there uh opportunities for us to improve our communications? Because with improved communications. Um, things are done more quickly, transparency is, is, is further guaranteed. Uh, and reliability. So though, to me, those, those would be very important and I know with twenty eight communities to meet with twenty eight different. Uh, county advisors is, uh, can be ambitious, but I think it's absolutely necessary. Um, meaning with each of the communities in their community, I think is absolutely necessary. So, you know, um. I had thought, you know, my thoughts are, I'd like to lay out a ninety day plan, for example. Well, I don't think I'm going to accomplish all of those types. Well, I don't think I'm going to accomplish all of those types of one on one meetings or introductions in a ninety day period. It won't be because of a lack of effort, but there are a lot of things that are going to be undertaken. So again, at an at an initial, I could send an email out to these folks to tell them. You know, once I'm on the job for, you know, first few days, introduce myself to them. Let them know what my intent is that I would like to meet with them, I would like to hear from them. I'd like to build a relationship with them. And that due to the number of tasks on hand initially coming out of the gate. Try to set an expectation of when we'd be able to actually sit down and have those conversations.
Sounds ambitious, but sounds good, thanks, Joe. Thank you.
Commissioner Collins.
Hey, Joe, how would you convey the value of county government at the local and state levels?
How would I compare the value of county government at the local and state levels?
Now, how would you how would you convey that message to the local government?
Oh, my, excuse me, excuse me, well, I know that. We have. We have twenty eight communities that all vary in size. And resources. Some of those communities. Require. County help due to the fact that just their bottom lines aren't able to stand up, say, an engineering department, for example. That what I and and so understanding what their needs are certainly. Colors the the conversation of how I convey to you, these are these these are the needs of your community. This is where the assets and the capabilities of the county and they're there for you, for your capability, I mean, for your for your advantage. We talked about, I briefly touched on the engineering, however, you know, what if they had issues about assessments, for example? You know, are they getting, you know, the maximum dollar in return? From their county benefits, well. Again, I'm accessible to them, I will have I I if I don't have answers for them. I'm very good at bringing together the subject matter experts and going to the people who know those answers. And that's an advantage, that's an advantage of of county government to convey to them that. That you're going to have somebody who understands what your issues are and will act on those, will act on those needs. Will be realistic, will will be a partner and try to figure out solutions for whatever whatever the particular challenges in your community. And again, all of that will be conveyed through building a personal relationship, through building that relationship with the community and with the county advisor. If they don't know about me or if they don't know about what the county has from a resource standpoint that could be advantageous to them that are available to them. Then shame on 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 me. For not bringing that information to the forefront to them and letting them having them have that information to know that's a good thing to know. I've got, I know I can pick up the phone and I can call the county commissioner's director's office. And I can talk about an issue and if the 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 director does not have an answer for me, I know I'm going to get an answer in short time. And that this thing is not just going to wither on the vine. So to me, you know, there's there's the school aspect, you know, there are students, there's another advantage to the county. Vocation of farming and agricultural related issues. We're moving into a more sustainable world. We are. And to the county, students have that opportunity to pursue a profession, pursue a career. In those more burgeoning areas of commerce out of necessity, you know, that that we need to. Address sustainability. In our world locally, so there's another opportunity, the agricultural school is a tremendous. Vocational opportunity for students in each of the communities of the twenty eight communities. So those are just a few of the things and and I would be a champion. And of course, if I was to be named the director. Day one, I mean, I I'm I'm looking at everything, I'm immersing myself into. Every aspect of the counties, I want to be a subject matter expert and being able to say, what does the county offer to you? Well, there's a lot of things right now that I think I I may not be aware of. That the county offers to 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 me as a as a resident, but let's just say if I was a leader of a community. So that's essentially, I I I think, an opportunity that lays ahead if I was to get this position is to immerse myself. Into every aspect that I could, no matter how how minor it may appear, it could be a major issue for somebody in a in one of the, say, smaller communities. Of the county to know that there is a particular service or a resource available to them.
Perfect, thank you. Joe, I noticed that you've had a varied career, both public and private, which is a positive thing. Because. I think I think I think when you graduate from one to the other, you'll you 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 take the skills from your first career. But in the recent past, in your public career, name one mistake you think you've made in in. And what you learned from it.
Certainly. I have a, well, it's not that I have a list.
No, no.
But, well. In the government was one mistake that I made. And it was it had to do with certifying the town of Braintree as a green community. The government, the state government offers up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant money. To communities who certify themselves as a green community. In two thousand and nineteen. We undertook, we we became aware of the program, we had about a four month window. To meet all of the criteria to submit and our application to become a green community. We had a number of the items that had been accomplished already under our belt that we met. And there were one or two items that we had to. Basically complete and then submit. So it was going to be a little bit of a a tight run for us. And so I had worked with the P I had worked with a number of people from within our DPW department, our planning department, our building department. And we were able to gather, I'm going to say there were ten ten issues that we or ten items we had to check off on the list. With the tenth item being submission. So what we did is we did very good job of accomplishing all nine of those items, however. I did not, in in the last two weeks. I had at that point, there was, we were working on the budget. The the fiscal twenty year budget, this was about in the May timeframe. And we had a number of things that were were going on in that that we had to meet that deadline of presenting the budget and and having it approved by June first. That I did not, I missed, I missed. A supervisory meeting with with the main with the person who was going to submit the application for my DPW team. And so I conveyed the message through the DPW director. At a budget meeting to say, are we on track, I asked the question, are we on track to submit this green communities? Because we've got to have it submitted by, I'm going to say this was a Tuesday by Thursday, and he said, we're good to go. I'm almost certain, I said, great, just give me confirmation on that. I didn't follow up on that and I found out on Friday, when I said, how did we do? He said, we didn't get it in. That was on me. I I cost the town two hundred and fifty thousand dollars additional funds that I that we could have gained. Okay, so. That was, I took accountability for that. And that to me was. I should have met with that person to ensure because that was an important, that was an important effort on our part. It didn't, it didn't compromise us from a budgetary standpoint. But certainly, it would have helped to have that additional two hundred and fifty dollars to apply. To open space issues to water and soar, our stormwater issues, things of that nature. To apply toward upgrading, perhaps air handlers in our buildings. To use energy efficient lighting, various of things like that to augment those programs that we already had in place. Any kind of money that that we can get at, whether it be, and I worked very closely with our procurement office. I would meet weekly with the procurement officer and our grant writer. And always wanted to know what was new and exciting, send these folk, these folks who are encouraged that they go to all of the all of the. The state MCPPO office, procurement office, where all kinds of conferences that they could that were conducted by the state. To identify any kinds of money that we could get that could help augment our operating budget and our normal revenues. This was one of those opportunities and I felt awful about it and that was a tough report to give to the mayor.
That's a very good answer. Thank you. We're winding up here, Commissioner Collins.
Okay, reading again, now to end on a positive note, tell us about a decision you made or a project you managed in your career of which you are particularly proud.
I am particularly proud of the reconfiguration, the reorganization of the Braintree DPW department. Braintree, the state of Massachusetts and the federal government had mandated a stormwater program. That each community had to stand up, had to implement and stand up. If you if the community was not able to meet that standard by a certain timeframe and the the community was subject to fines. As well as subject to withholding of state grant money. So to me, that was a no brainer, that was a no brainer. So. When I first took over, one of the things that I noted that unfortunately, my predecessor as chief of staff and director of operations had taken the job three years previous. But for about two and a half years of that timeframe. He was under care and being treated for cancer. And most of the time he was not able to work in the office and therefore. Things were kind of left hanging. From an operational oversight standpoint. And as a result of that, the DPW, which in my mind performs a real world message mission on a daily basis. On a daily basis overseeing our water and sewer, overseeing our roads, our parks. Traffic signalizations, all kinds of public safety issues and conveniences of 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 life that they provide for us that we really don't give second thoughts to. They were, they were rudderless, there was really a lack of of guidance. The mayor who was very hands on. Didn't have that opportunity to be hands on. On a full time basis with the DPW, so after my assessment of the DPW, I had made a recommendation that. The management needs to change in the sense that the organization of the management, not necessarily the personnel, but just the management. Organization needed to change in order to make sure that there were clearer lines of communication, clearer lines of authority. And that responsibilities were delineated more clearly and that that meant equipment was assigned. People knew what they were going to be doing when they came to work, they were using their professional licenses and not, you know. Doing other types of work where their professional licenses were not being utilized. And at the same time, seeing that this water, stormwater program needed to be stood up, I saw an opportunity. During our review and reorganization to incorporate the stormwater function into our DPW and particularly to argue to leverage our water and sewer department. We were able to do that, we were able to meet all the standards. And within we did that within a current year's budget, we so it started within the fiscal year of eighteen. And it finished before the fiscal year of eighteen ended. So we stood up that program, we did not have to supplement their budget. We were able to stand that program up without, or I should say, within the existing budget. We were able to stand up and and identify fees that would be revenue to run those stormwater operations. As we moved into the future fiscal years. And we were able to, working with the HR director, working with the unions, we were able to. Modify certain positions because there were a lot of similar. Licensing that were required in the stormwater area as it was in the in the sewer in water and sewer operations, I should say. So we were able to do that without any add to staff. And then that program grew and and it grew in a very small incremental way, but the value returned far outweighed any cost. And. Any disruption that was created in the DPW due to the changes that we implemented. And I think working those two things together at the same time. That team, that DPW soared over the next two years. There was clear lines of authority, clear lines of communication and accountability. And you could see the morale rise in that team in in that department. So I was very proud of that, Commissioner Collins.
Nice job.
Okay, Joe, we're gonna bring our cleanup batter in and for one final question, Commissioner Stady.
Okay.
Yes, so on behalf of all of us, congratulations on being one of the finalists and now after all these questions, it's your turn. Do you have any questions that you'd like to ask us?
Yes, actually, I do, thank you, so. How many questions do I have, because I have a few.
We're gonna limit to three.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. In your view, what is the most challenging aspect or area of oversight in governing the county on a day to day basis?
I I I think I can start, I've been been consistent here today and that general question does come up for very somewhat differently depending on who you're talking to, but. I think communication. Is a. Is is an issue. I think. How do I say this, it's very hard to in become innovative or make any changes. Just us going outside and hiring community paradigm and going through this whole process is like innovation, innovative for the county. And we're we're committed to several other innovation projects, including the Abraham's best practice audit, so. We we need to do a much better job of explaining to our department heads and reaching out to our cities and towns, telling them. What county government's done, can do and how it's changed and how we can do do more for them, so it in my. I mean, there's a number of them too, I could ask a lot of questions, I have a lot of questions, but I think if we shore up communication and do a better job. Even with our own people, as I started out by saying, in the cities and towns, that things would be a heck of a lot better. It's very hard to make changes. In old established places, just as I'm sure when you made changes in the town of Braintree, it was hard to implement. That's what I think is the issue.
Okay, thank you, absolutely.
Yeah, I'd follow up with the other idea from each one of us or Joe or do you want?
Sure, thank you, I I think that would be helpful.
I I concur with Chairman Shay, I think that, you know, to use your vernacular, if you will, you got to identify your mission. What is our mission, explain our mission clearly and concisely to our constituents, to our stakeholders. And to as many people as possible and in doing that, those people are going to buy in. And that's the name of the game, make sure that people understand what we're about, what we represent, what we can do for them, what they can do for us. That's that's the challenge.
Thank you.
Next question.
I don't know if Commissioner Collins.
I'm sorry.
I wasn't sure.
There there are so many different. Things cooking at once in this job, there really are, so you're working with the towns, you're working with the state. you're working with the towns, you're working with the state. There are strong personalities in different departments, some of which we oversee as regular employees, and some which we oversee as, or work with, I should say, as elected officials within the county. And it's a balancing of all these, all these issues. So I think it really comes back to what Joe had mentioned, where it comes down to communication. I think that's probably the biggest part of it. And, and then, and then moving from there, because of the areas of Zoom that we hadn't really been part of before, our audience is much bigger now than it had been in the past. And so we're kind of getting used to input from different areas that we hadn't been used to before. So it really does, I think it does come down to communication. So I think Joe nailed it with that one word.
Thank you. My next question would be, if selected as the candidate for this position, what would success look like after six months or a year as the county director? And how would I know I was successful in that role?
I'll take that first, Joe. I think the thing we've tried to establish in our interview process is the fact that whoever does get hired, we're going to want to sit down and develop goals and expectations, and make sure they're clear and understood. Just as you said, the key in terms of your success, it seems to be a common thread of establishing clear expectations. We probably want to do the same thing. And then we would have a check-in, I would think a periodic check-in, and you would know how you're doing by those meetings formally or informally. And obviously, at six months and a year, we'd see where we're at.
Thank you.
I agree.
Sorry, Joe.
I'm sorry. I agree wholeheartedly with Dick. And we do, we've had a history in the recent past of, of setting goals and then going over somewhat made more difficult by Corona, but we can't, we can't use it for an excuse. We, we have to work with it. Hopefully, it's, it appears it's coming to an end. We'll keep our fingers crossed, but it put an enormous burden on certain assets, aspects of our operation. But we want to, we want to set goals that we know are reachable and review them with a choice here. And we're easy people to talk to, so that shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
So Joe, it's kind of funny. You have the, the three commissioners, but they work with the county director. And we, all three of us are working together through the county director to try to make things work. And because of COVID, because of Zoom, because of financial issues across the county, we had a bunch of different people that have retired, like all at once. And so we have a lot of balls in the air all at once. And they're hitting us hard. I don't think Joe, our chairman, Joe Shay, I don't think any chairman's ever worked quite as hard as he's working right now. And, and our acting director and our assistant director, I mean, I don't think they've ever worked as hard, well, certainly not in these positions, maybe in other jobs, but it's really a lot going on all at once. It's all hitting us all at once. So I would think success would be not unlike your, your past background in the military, where everything is working the way it's supposed to work and not blowing up all over the place. And that would be our goal, to have it work like, like a fine-tuned watch, you know, just things moving along as they should. And I would consider that success at this point right now.
That's very clear. Thank you. All right, I have one more question. Well, I, I think the next question would be, who would you consider the county's most important government partner, aside from the 28 communities within the county?
I'll jump on that. I think it's, I think it's the state, because they're our tenant in all our, in all our courthouses.
That's it.
And, you know, so we have hundreds of state employees working in our courthouses on a daily basis. And so that would be our biggest immediate connection. But we also have other interactions with the state. Different money comes to us through the registry. Part of that goes to the state. There's all different tentacles from the state within the county. And so that's a, there's a strong relationship there.
Yeah, no doubt, Joe, to concur with Peter. Aside from our 28 member towns and communities, the state has to be the other one. I mean, we're working with them all the time. And we're interacting with them all the time, with the courts, with legislation, right? We've got filed other things going on. You know, it's the state, certainly the state delegation. Sure, certainly.
Great.
I, I concur. I was going to say the state, and many, many aspects of the state, but the interaction we have with the, because we manage to own the courthouse and our custodians are in there, and they pay rent, we have daily communication. And there's always, not issues, we have a good, good relationship, and we want to keep it that way.
So I would suspect that, that establishing relationships or utilizing established, already established relationships with key state government leaders only lends itself to a closer and more beneficial partnership with the state, where the reliance, the reliance, level of reliance on a, a great, of establishing and maintaining a great relationship with the state, it's so important. So that, I've had a lot of experience in that, working in the mayor's office with delegations, and having had the opportunity to meet other representatives in Senate, state senators and representatives from the county area. So that is, thank you for providing that additional clarity.
Well, thank you, Joe, and you should be proud that you made this cut, because we, we interviewed some terrific people today. And here's what I hope is going to happen. We've put a lot of effort into this, and we're very, very happy with what Community Paradigm has brought to us and the product. But it's up to us now to sit down and make this choice. If I tell you what's going to be next Wednesday, it'd probably be the Wednesday afterwards. But we're committed to going straightforward, and we want to keep you informed. If you have any questions, you can call Michelle Abadini, who is our acting county director and our human resources director. She's been on all these interviews and has done yeoman's work also. And we would get right back to you. So this is not a long look. I, we're going to try to keep it to a good schedule, because the timing is very important, not only budget, the Abraham's group, you know, the loosening up of the horrible pandemic and everything, everything. We're getting everyone back to work, we're getting all these buildings open. It's, it's all coming together. And we've had a crazy winter, but we're gonna, we're going to be very timely about this. So, and that concludes our interview. Feel free to call anytime or ask any questions.
Well, I just want to say thank you for this privilege and this honor to be had, to be selected as a finalist for the position of the Norfolk County Director of Operations. I thank you, Mr. Lynch, as well. I greatly appreciate the guidance that you've provided. I found these interviews, both interviews, to be thorough. They have been challenging questions. And I, I feel as if, based on understanding the primary responsibilities and skill sets that you're looking for to fill in this position, I really do feel as if I am uniquely qualified to address a number of issues, to handle a number of responsibilities that you require. And I assure you, it highly motivates me to have this opportunity to be considered for this position. And my motivation would go through the roof, I think, if I was selected for this position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Take care.
Okay, this, this concludes our interviewing session. This is an open public meeting. We have one other subject on the meeting. It's a weekly discussion about the American Rescue Plan. I don't know if you need a minute break, Commissioners?
Let's get another break for another minute.
Chairman, any idea we're going to wrap up? This has been a long day, long week.
And I, well, I want to.
Billy, I just hopefully can make it brief. I'm really up to.
All right, I'm going to make it very brief. I'm looking at Bill with dagger eyes, but I want to wonder if Bernie has any last words for us?
No, I, I don't have any last words, other than to say thank you, and feel free to reach out to me.
Right, we're going to keep you in the loop.
With any questions each one of you might have.
Bernie, great job, Bernie.
You guys did a great job today. Thank you. Take care.
Mr. Chair, I can do three minutes if you want.
Item number seven.
Awesome. Excellent.
Day on the American Rescue Plan.
Very important. Importantly, we're just continuing to play telephone tag with NICO and the feds. The question that is, the reason this is on the agenda, we still have not received an answer to this question, is must we accept the funds within the next couple of days? And so I was able, multitasking while you were doing your, your interviews to be on the phone with NICO for a couple hours. I got a couple of people's voicemails. I'm chasing them down. But I, this was just a precautionary agenda-setting item, because we, you may have needed to vote to accept the funds. It's, it's my feeling now, after talking to the Plymouth County Treasurer and some people at the state, that we could vote next week and be okay. But I just, I will inform all three of you, if that is different, and we will schedule an emergency meeting tomorrow, or Saturday, or Sunday, if need be. But that's, that was just the, this was a due diligence agenda line item. I know Commissioner Shay had informed me, we did hear from Plymouth County as well, there's a desire to have the heads of all three counties put their heads together on Monday. I don't really have the details. But again, we, we've been hopping on meetings and collaborating with one another to talk about the five or six questions we still haven't gotten answered. So I have no update on that. But this was really just, in the event, I needed you guys to take a vote to accept at the peril of losing the funds for the county. And that's why this is here. We do not, I believe we're okay right now. And I will contact you immediately personally if that changes.
But you want to vote today, is that what you're saying?
No, in the event that we had to, if there was a drop, if they said, you have to, you have to apply for this by Friday, let's say. We, no one has clarified when we must apply by. And we're being, we're hearing some things, say, in the next couple of weeks, some others said in the next couple of days, meaning from the May 11th timeline. So we just put this on as a precaution. We're operating under the understanding that we have a little more time to gather our information to request the funds. But in the event that between the last meeting and this, something changed, that's why this agenda item is there.
Just, just real quick, and I want to make it quick. I'm going to make it very quick. Number one, I think there's a webinar today, right?
Yes.
I signed up for it. I'm going to try to get on after I get a big coffee. But there's a webinar about, the federal government's doing it. And just for you, my colleagues will know, real quick, I asked Billy to please check out and look carefully at broadband, because that is one of the stated purposes. And in lieu of our trustee meeting, and all the concerns from parents and staff about bad broadband there, maybe that's a potential area we could improve upon using the money, if it, you know, if it's to be. So I want to make you in the loop, that's all. I asked them to look at that as one of the areas that possibly could help out the Aggie School as a possible thing. And I emailed Rick, I emailed Tammy, and they said, that's a great idea. We're going to follow up on it. Just wanted to keep you in the loop. We just did it this morning, that's all.
Excellent.
All right.
Bill, you're going to be on the webinar.
Yeah, we've been on a bunch.
And Richard. Okay, that's great.
That's right. Yep.
Dick, thank you for being on the webinar. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Collins.
So with regard to the feedback from Bristol and Plymouth, Bill, I know that you're talking to them probably multiple times each day, right?
Yep.
And, and so there's some interest in having the head of the counties get together in some way, or to just to talk a few things out. I'm fine with that. We have to be careful about that, because it can't be more than, it can't be more than three counties, or else you'd, or else you'd be an openly meeting law violation of the Mass Association. So it can be three, but not more.
Wow.
And you can't have two commissioners from one county at that meeting, or that would be a violation of the open meeting law. So if we were to do that, I would suggest, Joe, I don't want to put more on your plate, but.
No, I, I'm committed to it, and.
All right. So if, so if, I would suggest that you be a designated in discussing with Plymouth and Bristol.
Can't you just post a public meeting to get around that, Peter? I mean, is there a problem in doing that? Or is it, you just don't want to, okay, never mind. I won't ask that question. Never mind. Joe, if you want to go with it, God bless you, man.
I'm going to go and comment. I think we'll get Treasurer Blotty, who's.
All right.
Going to drive us there. He doesn't know it yet.
I think you should put in for that bonus pay that's coming around. You know what I'm talking about?
Please, please.
Oh, it's funny. We got a letter on that today.
I had to bring it up.
You had to bring it up. Okay. We're getting silly. This week has been quite a week. I want to thank everyone. Is there anything else under, under number seven on our agenda? Anything we didn't anticipate?
Michelle, you said something about signing the sheets and.
Yeah, so if you could just fill out the sheets and sign them, the interview sheets, and send them back, because we need them for the employee, the file, the interview file. If we haven't got audited, that's part of the audit, so.
If you can read my hands scratching, it might.
You're welcome to type.
I'm going to scan it, and then I'll scan it. Obviously, I want to keep it for my own reference too, so.
Yes, it's good to have. Thank you, everyone, for, for doing this with us and following the protocol. I really appreciate it.
The whole process was.
Really? Great process, Mr. Chairman.
So far so good. And I, and I think it's because we, you know, we decided to go outside, and it's kind of new to us, but it's so far so good.
Yeah.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, so.
Well, I just wanted, I'll second the motion, but I did want to say what you guys just said. Terrific candidates. They did a great job. They really did.
Yeah, yeah. We've got some hard thinking to do over the weekend.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to adjourn. I want to mention, I did at the late part of the school committee meeting last night, that we were informed yesterday that our friend Rick McGahey from the town of Holbrook has passed. He's a longtime friend of the county's, and we work very well with Rick. He's got a very beautiful and large family, and he will be missed. I do know that we have his daughter-in-law working for us at the Registry deeds. Our sympathy goes out, but Rick, Rick was a great guy, and we had a lot of interaction with him. All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned at 1:33 PM. Thank you very much.